The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the January 19th, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people individually. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate their privacy rights or privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Great to see you all. Happy Thursday. I do not have any items for the briefing because I know we have a very full agenda. So already proceed when you are ready, Chair.
Thank you very much. And as noted in the agenda that has been updated effective less than 24 hours ago, we welcome back from Dr. Gullett's team Mr. Stephen Ayers and Dr. Annie Hembrook to talk about the instructional calendar for 2023-2024.
And if I may, Madam Chair, before Mr. Ayers begins, as you know, we added this item as you stated, Chair. I want to provide some framework about this item coming back. We appreciate the Board's robust discussion on this item. We appreciate the community's feedback. Our team has been working really hard. I want to thank the Committee again and Vice Chair Thrower for her participation in the Committee and all the work that has gone into this thus far. Our team discovered some additional information based on the feedback and looking at the first and second semesters and those breaks and some of the questions that we received. So Mr. Ayers and Dr. Hembrook will provide some information on that. And again, just as a reminder, we are all about students and doing what's best for students, and this is a complex puzzle. And so we appreciate everyone's patience with us as we work to do what's best for our students in Marion County. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Mr. Ayers.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Ms. Lana Martinez Lopez. We're here again today to discuss the 23-24 instructional calendar. Just a brief reminder of how the process was where we got here. Remember, the Committee was tasked with developing instructional calendar, and we had to consider the following items. School Board Policy, which is 82-10, 180 days or the hourly equivalent. August 10th start date, statute says we can't start before then, and two semesters of approximately equal in length. We also had to consider the Union Contract for the Teachers, which is 196 teacher days, as well as seat hours required to generate credit. This year, we offered three times to meet as the Committee, and during these focus groups, suggestions, input, requests, and the needs for the 23-24 instructional calendar were brainstormed, discussed, and discussed. Representatives were able to ask each other questions and have conversations together. Finally, the calendar considerations were prioritized based on the collaboration. 180 student days and the 196 teacher contract days were discussed. Priorities from the Committee included putting students' needs first regarding instructional time and earning credits, and providing teachers and instructional staff time and space for consistent professional learning and collaboration. To review, you have in front of you the history of the draft of the calendars that we've had. The initial calendar was presented on the January 5th work session and was posted for stakeholder input. At the January 5th work session, the Board, after reviewing the input, requested three different options. At the January 17th work session, three options were presented. Today, we are presenting another option, Option D, which is in front of you. This option includes a full week at Thanksgiving and 88 days in the first semester. This means the first semester will end on January 4th. We received assurances yesterday that the College of Central Florida's spring semester will not start before January 8th, 2024. So you have Option D in front of you now. Any questions?
Mr. Ayers, what day did you say it was that the College of Central Florida starts back?
We received assurances yesterday that they will not start their spring semester before August 8th or January 8th.
Thank you.
January 8th, yes. And that holds true for how the semester started this year also for College of Central Florida. So that's good information for our secondary students who are dual enrollment students and that sort of thing. So that does help guide us a bit. So thank you for that additional information, Mr. Ayers. Board, I think we need to bring it back to us and have some dialogue here transparently. I know I was losing sleep over it, and I think several of you also were. I know we had a work session dedicated to this two days ago, and once that draft was put out, it seemed to generate even more dialogue than perhaps the first three had. At least, that's what it felt like with information coming so quickly at us in a short period of time. So I appreciate the opportunity, Dr. Gullett, putting on this agenda for us to have this dialogue again. And honestly, the first person, and I know Board, I want to hear from all of you, but the first person I want to hear from and can't pick up the phone and call, and I wanted to ask Ms. Thrower for the last 48 hours, as a member of this Committee, you worked diligently. And when I considered what we had done, not only this past Tuesday, but also previously, we had essentially upended everything that Committee had done. Going from one calendar to then requesting three calendars was upending the work the Committee had done. And then further, what we did on Tuesday was even that much more of an adjustment to Committee work. And I wanted to ask your opinion and feedback on how that is, how that felt, how that looks, because we have a lot of good Committees we're putting in place, and I don't want this Board to not reference the valuable work that these Committees are putting in. I don't want us to be known as the Board that just upends all the work that others are putting in. And so that was one of the things that's been burning on my heart to ask you, that I couldn't ask you until we sat here at the table. So Ms. Thrower, if you don't mind, I would like to start with you in asking, first of all, the answer to that question, and then you're welcome to offer your feedback specifically on Draft D.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Campbell. And, you know, from my perspective, I see this as an opportunity to continue to grow the trust and the communication and collaboration. The instructional calendar drives everything, and since we're the largest employer in Marion County, it's appropriate for everyone to have the opportunity to weigh in. The Committee started three years ago because in the past, it had been very top-down, and it was usually rubber stamped by the Board, and that was that. And I wasn't comfortable with that approach. It was like, we need to bring more people into the conversation. And then, on top of that, we need to bring the community into the conversation. So you start with a Committee, and then you put it out there for the surveys, you get the feedback. Last year was a piece of cake because there was nothing controversial. People were glad, for the most part, at least the ones that aren't trying to improve the support of our teachers. That's what these early release days are designed to do, to provide the appropriate professional learning opportunities. Now, how that has looked in real time over the years is a different conversation, but that is the intent. Well, this Board Member has never been a fan of early release days. I've experienced them as a teacher, I've experienced them as a parent. So to be able to get rid of those made for a happy Nancy. However, what I learned through the process, and people weren't upset about that last year largely, but it's not getting us, we need something more, and we need something different, and we need time. Our teachers and the people that are direct with our kids, they need time. And we are in a delicate time in this district. We have people that have never set foot in the classroom, that have thrown their hats in the ring in the classroom to do this work. We have veterans that have been doing this forever, that are like, how many times can we repackage the same professional development and just call it something different? So this is the year, in my mind, after everything being what it was during the pandemic years, where we were just surviving, to put it in there and let's have the conversation. So while this has been muddy, this has morphed into different than what the Committee had actually proposed, to me, that's a strength of the process because we have certainly achieved community engagement. Has it been tough? Yeah. Do I want it to look like this every year moving forward? No. There's valuable learning that has occurred with this difficult and complex process. I think everybody has a much better idea of what this is really, what it really entails to come up with a sound instructional calendar. So that is the relatively long answer to your relatively long question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. So with that, Board, if we can go one by one and talk about our individual thoughts on this, I think, oh, and I will start with Vice Chair Thrower, but the way I see this working the best is for us to come to consensus on specific items throughout this calendar because this does look different than it did before. So there are a couple of items that I think perhaps if we come to consensus, yes, we're good on the week of Thanksgiving. And this is just an option. Yes, we're good on the week of Thanksgiving. Yes, we're good on the two weeks of winter break with it ending on January 1st and the three days actually ending the semester. Yes, we're good on students' last day being the Friday before Memorial Day, but teachers coming back and having a workday after that. Like, there's some things like that that we collectively, I believe, need to have conversation on, and then let's leave the conversation about the early release to the end if we can come to consensus on the other items.
Madam Chair, before Vice Chair come back, you asked her a question about the upending of the Committee. I don't think our, with all due respect to the Committee that worked, I don't feel that we were upending them. I think they gave us a starting point to work from, and I don't want any Committee ever feel that we're upending them. I think in the processes of forming these Committees, we need to, prior to putting them to work, we need to kind of give them some parameters on what we're looking for. I think that would make their position a lot easier in knowing what to come back with to bring to the Board. But I don't ever want them to feel that we were upending or just tearing it apart just to be doing it. I think every option that they gave was Draft A, B, and C, and then now Draft D has been starting points for us to have the right conversations. So please, Mr. Ayers, Dr. Hembrook, everybody else that worked on the Committee, Vice Chair, please don't ever take that as being offensive or anything like that, but you guys are giving us the framework to make good decisions.
Very good point, Reverend Cummings. Thank you for expressing that. And perhaps it is just parameter for a Committee going in, understanding that the Board has the ultimate authority to approve or guide this process, but the Committee certainly, we want that feedback and direction that they believe so that we can get a good starting point. So thank you for bringing that up. Yes, so we'll start with Vice Chair on your thoughts, as I originally said. You didn't get to that part.
Thank you. And yes, each one of these iterations has been labeled "draft" for a reason, you know, "draft-proposed instructional calendar." And I even see this one as, ideally, you want to take each year and reflect on it and what went right, and with a lot of feedback and engagement from all stakeholders, you perfect it, you refine it, you know, as you go. And then eventually, my big vision is to even be able to do a calendar two years in a row so that people can plan. Airbnb wasn't even invented when we went from having just a few days at Thanksgiving to the full week. You know, times have changed. Times have moved very differently. There's a lot of people that travel now, all of those things. I heard loud and clear that the week off at Thanksgiving had become so embedded and so expected that people literally felt like they were having the rug yanked out from under them. And while that wasn't the intention, that was the feedback. So I've been conditioned not to travel during Thanksgiving because it's so heinous, but that's just me. But I am fine with the November and the full week off at Thanksgiving. I think that is really listening to our community. The other things that are with it, to me, are I can get comfortable, you said let's not talk about early release yet unless you want me to talk about early release.
I would prefer, honestly, oh, go ahead.
As far as early release, what I'm going to leave right here is prove me wrong. You know, I will get behind and push and really believe that if this is what's being asked for, then this is what's needed, and so whatever the vote ends up being, I will honor it, and I will push, and I will do all I can to make it successful. I have my concerns, but I've said that earlier. I've never been a fan of early release. I think that we can plan better moving forward. That's where I am with that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and give everything I got right now so that I can be through with this and we can move down the road. Again, thank you to the Committee for coming back with another draft and hearing the concerns that we as a Board had and the concerns that have been shared with this Board. For me, the week of Thanksgiving was vitally important for all of us. I won't just say some of us, staff and students. So I'm glad that you were able to figure that out, as well as making sure that we had the kids in the seat, the seat time. That was what was most important to getting that done. And you still have the two weeks of Christmas break. So I'm in agreement with the Thanksgiving. I'm in agreement with the date of start and the date of ending. I've heard from our staff, I've heard from parents, I've heard from community people in regards to this, making sure that we do try to keep the Thanksgiving week break in there and the Christmas break being what it is and coming back at a decent time. I think Draft D does do that. I don't. I had reservations, and I know Chair Campbell, you were saying, hold off, but I'm going to be through with this, and you'll know my point. I had reservations about Monday, and I think most of the comments that we've gotten has been about Monday. If we're going to do it, I prefer it to be on Wednesday, and that's where I'm at with it.
I'll go next. Dr. James.
So when I was presented with Draft D yesterday, I asked a question, which was, has a high school principal been shown Draft D? And I believe the answer was no. So Mr. Frazier and I contacted every high school principal yesterday, and not to my surprise, every high school principal is against the semester ending on January 4th because it is essentially, if you have worked in the high school or secondary space, because I don't want to negate middle school either, they will do semester exams in December because outside of a very elite class of students who are going to spend the entire break studying, and those do exist, most students will not. So semester exams will have to occur in December, which means when we return from Christmas break, we will have three instructional days on secondary campuses that are not maximized. Those instructional minutes will not be maximized. You will have students who are in credit recovery until the end of Semester 1 and then are rolling into an Algebra 1 in seat class Semester 2. So that Algebra 1 teacher cannot proceed with, you know, Quarter 2 or Quarter 3 Semester 2 instruction because all of their class is not present. You have semester-based coursework like psychology, sociology, driver's ed. Now, in elementary, it probably will be rather seamless. They will just continue with instruction. But we have thousands of students who sit on secondary campuses, and this schedule, in my opinion, gives three days of not maximized instructional minutes. I wholeheartedly believe, and all of our high school principals and leaders believe that the semester needs to end before Christmas break. So I'm not against a week at Thanksgiving. I think that's wonderful. But what that means is that the 18th and the 19th have to be instructional days. If that's how it's going to weigh out, then the 18th and the 19th have to be instructional days, and the semester ends on the 19th to get the 86 days in Semester 1, and then we return from Christmas break on whatever that is, the 3rd or the 4th. And again, I'm going to go on record and say I was and continue to be against the idea that we are returning so late in January. That was one of the first things I said, and I will continue to go back to that. But if the poker game and the gambling pieces we need are that week at Thanksgiving, which I can respect, then we have to have concessions somewhere else. But I am not going to be on board with ending this semester in January as someone who I believe is representative of leaders on our secondary campuses and those teachers. Those teachers do not want the semester to end in January. So that is where I'm going to stand with that, and that is my suggestion on how to fix that problem. The Board can do with that what they so choose. The rest of it, early release days, we can chat on later. I'm not too hung up on that, but again, that's where I'm at with that.
Okay. Ms. Conrad.
Really, one of the things I want is just, Mr. Ayers and Dr. Hembrook, if you could clarify really for the community members, because a lot of the feedback I received, nobody had watched the six hours of talks that we'd already had explaining some of this process. And so can you just explain for the community the release of the CF calendar yesterday and how that affected our time coming back from Christmas break and how it affected us being able to have a week at Thanksgiving so that everybody understands?
I want to make sure that you understand that the CF calendar has not been released.
Okay.
But we've received assurances from the College, and historically, looking at past calendars, they don't start till the second week in January for the new, the spring semester. So they're in development of calendar, just like we are. But when we contacted, we got assurances on that aspect. And the whole issue with that is with dual enrollment, you know, if you start, if you start our second semester before, or if their semester starts before ours, then you have scheduling issues, you have students that are sitting in classes that they're not in, because we have quite a bit of dual enrollment on our campuses, as well as students that travel from our campus to the college, and then they would be missing first. So that's the main, the driving for that.
Thank you for reiterating that. The other concern I have is in regards to the early release. When we came back from Christmas break, I received a lot of negative feedback about the training that our teachers went into coming back from the break. So for me, us getting out an hour early, the most important piece of that is that we're providing valuable professional learning, or we are in touch with what our teachers need, that we're not pushing out a district agenda, and that we ensure that our teachers are getting either the time that they need or the professional development that they need. It really is something I'm hearing from every teacher that's contacted me and every administrator that they don't have an hour to give up of instruction. So if we're going to take it for professional learning, it needs to be extremely valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. So I guess I'll share my thoughts on this, and then we need to really discuss what Dr. James has brought forth. Heard loud and clear that having six years of a week at Thanksgiving is something that feels as if we're taking it away. Six years is a long time for people to get comfortable. And so I heard loud and clear, a full week at Thanksgiving is what community, parents, and teachers want. So there's that. I can go either way on the conversation Dr. James just presented. I have a question about the number of days, because one thing I do notice is we've eliminated a day off in April, which we had tried to incorporate in. But I do see that the third nine weeks is 43 days, and the fourth nine weeks is 49 days. That's a significant difference in comparison to our first and second, which are 44 and 44. If those numbers are correct, and I'm certain that they are, I just wonder if we move spring break a week later, and if that brings us, it just shifts the imbalance perhaps. And I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, and we're not going to get a day back in April based on the rest of everything else. And so unless we take it from another...
I can tell you, going back to the Committee discussion when we had this, we had, you know, the three different meetings that we had. Moving, because if you'll recall, at one point, spring break was moved a week later because of the things like that. But I'm afraid if we did that, historically, we've always been that week of the 12th and the 14th spring break. We moved that again. People have made plans, things like that, to do that. We've always, you know, the Board policy says approximate equal lengths. Historically, we've always had a longer days in second semester because of instructional days missed for testing. And so as the Committee looked forward, again, students' needs were always presented at the forefront, and losing instructional days to testing, we were okay with having extended time in the fourth nine weeks for that.
So the fourth nine weeks is where that added instruction time is needed as opposed to the third nine weeks? That's my question.
That's when testing, testing is the month of May primarily, so most of the testing is done in the fourth nine weeks.
As we talk about the early release, I'll go ahead and share my thoughts on that as well. I'm of the same thought process of Vice Chair Thrower, prove me wrong. I do not believe that one hour is going to do what we're trying to say, that it's going to be the magic pill. I heard from multiple people in multiple ways about this thought process. Those who are teaching specials, for example, in the elementary grades, they will not have the ability to collaborate with their peers because there is no peer to them on their campuses. Same thing with those at secondary level and those... Uh, same thing with those at secondary level in those in those kind of CTE. They don't have peers on their campuses, so they can't collaborate um, in that way. The hour also perhaps will be eaten up by car line that could potentially go even longer than normal. And what does an hour actually do whenever it only becomes twenty minutes? Um, they're they're just, I have I have a lot of questions about how that works with the school day. Because if we're, I know we used to have early release for two hours and all of that issue, but if we're doing just an hour, how does that happen in secondary with third period? And how do lunches get incorporated? There, I just have a lot of questions about one hour early release. The last thing I'll say about that, while I understand the consistency of once a week would be helpful. I I just don't know how once a week at potentially only twenty to thirty minutes would be more valuable than possibly a two hour a week or even a half day entirely once a quarter or something like that would work. In a district that is already significantly struggling with attendance of our students. I am of the mindset, we don't need to give them another reason to not come to school. So that's how I feel about early release. However, as Vice Chair Thrower has said. I can get on the bandwagon to say, prove me wrong. And if it doesn't work this next year, so be it, we're never doing it again. However, that will be one entire year that students have missed out on that lost instruction. Because one hour less is not just planning and help for our teachers potentially at what we hope to be an hour. It could be twenty minutes. It it's not only that, but it's also lost instruction time. And and so because we will be shortening every class. So we can say maybe it's not, but we'll be shortening every class and that looks very different at secondary than it does at elementary. Um, okay, so those are my thoughts on that. We can, we can hash that out in a bit. So Board, I think we need to talk through what Dr. James is suggesting in that. Which my comment to everyone who wanted a full week at Thanksgiving was Thanksgiving on November twenty-third is the perfect storm for us. We haven't had that in several years and that's the perfect storm. We either have to cut from Thanksgiving or we're cutting from winter break. That's what I've told everyone. Now that we're seeing Thanksgiving week added in, we're actually extending the semester on into January. I hear what Dr. James has said. I would be of the mindset that actually those students that are behind perhaps could be making up work and give themselves a little bit of extra time. But is that how we want students spending their winter break? I I don't.
I'm I'm just, they're not. They're not gonna spend their break. It children who historically are in not completing work. I I, we did this as a district. Do you, can you recall the year we did this as a district? When we we ended semester two after Christmas break?
Dr. Henbrook has all those calendars. She has every calendar.
Say, say your question again, when we.
When was the last time we ended semester two in January?
That was a long time ago.
We have principals who are still principals at secondary high schools and they said it was horrible. I I can't think of all the adjectives, but it was a disaster. They're, they were principals at the school then and they're still principals.
So bear with me, I'm going through them. So far, I'm past fifteen sixteen and we hadn't. We had ended the semester prior to winter holiday at fifteen sixteen.
So that's good enough. That's historic, that's that's more than the six years of us having a full week at at Thanksgiving. So somehow through the course of all this time, we've been able to not only have a week of Thanksgiving break. But we've also been able to end the semester prior to winter break. And again, perfect storm, November twenty-third is not the great day for Thanksgiving for us if we're trying to give a week off at Thanksgiving. So we happen to be the wonderful board that gets this opportunity to hash this out.
It was two thousand fourteen fifteen was the last time.
Thank you. So Board, if we take the recommendation potentially to extend on into December and have our semester end, we're going back to the original calendar of what the committee had recommended. I I I would still be of the mindset that we cannot have schools starting back on January ninth. So I'm I'm looking at the original calendar that was presented to us by the committee. If you all have that one in front of you as well, it just says draft. It doesn't say A, B, C, or D. It just says draft.
And if I may, Madam Chair, it also says presented, um, January fifth, twenty twenty-three work session at the top.
Right. Thank you. So if we were to end the semester on December twentieth. So that means the first day out for students would be December twenty-first.
I, we technically can, we could technically start break on the twentieth and get the eighty-six days though, correct, Mr. Ayers? So the twenty, the, we could technically make the last day of school the nineteenth. And then if we did two weeks.
That would be the third.
The students would return on the third and presumably you would wanna teach your workday that day and the students would return on the fourth. Is that correct? Yes.
Are are you suggesting teacher workday on the second or the third with?
Would have to be the second.
If.
Second, because the first would be a Monday, they would automatically have that day off.
Yeah, and then the students would still get, the teachers would get a nine day holiday and the students would get a ten day holiday with that.
Right.
Ten day being workdays, not including weekends, obviously.
Right.
If we want to give the uh, afford the staff a ten workday holiday. Then the staff would return for a workday on the third and the students would return on the fourth.
I I don't have an issue with that. Um, that that would just mean they would get out on Tuesday, December nineteenth, correct?
Correct. That would be the last day before winter break. That would make semester one end December nineteenth.
And that would still suffice for them being able to complete, when would the um, semester end?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Semester would end the nineteenth.
And then the teachers would come back on January second to finish grades. Is that what we're talking?
Teacher would come back the third.
I think if the, to afford the teachers the ten day workday break, the teachers would need to return on the third.
Yes.
So then students don't start back until the fourth.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, the fourth is better than the ninth, for sure.
Definitely.
And I was considering, we had a public comment last time that talked about December twenty-fifth being the trade-off day for those families that have shared custody. That gives the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Five days.
Five days essentially there and then six to seven days on the other side. Which is closer than we had it for sure. Board, how do you feel about that? I hear Reverend Cummings say.
Six days. That would give them the twentieth, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five of the split day. So it'd be six days to the twenty-fifth and then on the other side as well. So it would be more days for shared custody. Um, cuz we're not looking at the weekends on this calendar.
Right.
So um, I I'm in favor of us moving it to the um, the day before Christmas. I mean, I'm sorry, the day ending, semester ending the nineteenth. Semester ending the nineteenth and the first day of Christmas break would be the twentieth. That's what, that what we're hearing, Dr. James?
And the nineteenth would be a one hour early release still?
No.
We haven't, we haven't gotten to early release yet. Let let's just hash out the actual days here.
I'm asking you as the twentieth, and that makes a difference on, for me, as a, as an educator. That makes a difference on getting everything tucked away, put away and getting ready to start the new semester when I get back. So that does make a difference to me.
So to Reverend Cummings, yes. For, as a board member, I am not gonna vote yes in a board meeting on the semester ending after Christmas. So what the board chooses to put forward to the the meeting is is the pleasure of the board. Um, we don't have to be in consensus to do that. But as a, I feel like as someone who represents secondary teachers and leaders, the semester cannot end. We have not done it in historically a very long time for a reason. It cannot end after Christmas break.
Thank you. And um, Dr. James, I have the same concerns. I I remember those days. And so I asked and and my understanding is, is that there is some different levels of flexibility that hadn't been offered during those uh, more difficult times that would be available um, this time. So that is something that I took into consideration. And that might be something to to share. Um, Dr. Gull, I believe I was, that was a question that I had asked, you know, how is that gonna work with exams and and midterms? And 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 those types of things.
Sure. I'm Vice Chair Thrower. Thank you. So uh, we said, you know, that the schools certainly can um, do the assessments early. I know it's it's a concern with the the break, but um, certainly they have the flexibility if they want to do the um, the exams early.
Okay, um, Board, do we have a consensus that we would have the last student and teacher day be December nineteenth with winter break beginning December twentieth? We have consensus on that?
I'm fine with it.
And then with that being said, that winter break would then end for students on January fourth. But end for teachers on January third, that teachers would be.
I would say it would end on the second and the third.
Yeah, Monday is the holiday. The teacher workday would be the second. Students would return on the third.
Okay, and I just, I again, don't have any idea about bargaining, just wanna make sure that we don't have anything specific to how breaks are divvied out. Okay.
I just, that makes a nine day, nine workday break for teachers, not ten. The teachers would need to return on the third to give them the ten workday break, which historically we have done, I believe. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Henbrook, or no? Historically, have teachers had nine workdays off or ten workdays off?
That has fluctuated depending on when Christmas is and when the New Year's Day. Because sometimes New Year's is on the first.
Yeah.
Which is a Monday like now, which is one extra day. Sometimes New Year's is on Sunday, like it was this year, so the holiday was the Monday and they come back.
Well, the original calendar that we're looking at here that just says draft on it, they were actually proposing a twelve day or thirteen day, so twelve day holiday, so.
So I just, that's why I really wanna be clear on that, but you know, what what did they, so this year, how many days was the, was our staff's holiday break workdays? This this current school year right now, it was, we could look it up, but. I just wanna respect their days and.
Um, holiday break for twenty twenty-three was eleven workdays.
Mm-hmm.
That includes obviously the holiday.
Holidays, but it was eleven workdays.
Eleven workdays.
Correct.
And then previous to this year, last year, how many, how many days was it?
You don't have that one.
I'm just looking to try and establish some historical reference to how many days. Nine seems short. Maybe I'm off base there, but nine seems short to me. But if that's what we've done historically and it's fluctuated and we've done nine before, then I'm certainly on board with returning on the second.
I think um, with staff, um, we try to give the kids, kids normally have what, ten, at least ten, correct?
I it's, I think it's normally at least ten.
It's at least ten. I think we need to be.
Oh, yeah, no.
Considerate to our staff and 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 they need to get at least ten if we can work that.
I agree.
And one thing I did hear though is how valuable the full days of professional development. While they didn't appreciate the content altogether, they appreciated the time. And at this juncture, we aren't incorporating any full day professional development. We have teacher workdays, but that's different.
Correct.
Um, and so I I did hear from several how powerful having a full day to collaborate with their school teams was valuable heading into the second semester.
Madam Chair, um, I think it's a great point. Mr. Ayers, can you provide some context to the conversations on those days?
Yes, ma'am. And remember, teacher, teacher days are dictated by the union contract, one hundred ninety-six days. Six of those days by union contract are paid holidays. Four of those days are by union contract, teacher workdays that are at the end of each quarter. Four of those days are pre-planning school days, which is in the contract. That leaves two days that we have in the past traditionally had two in-service days. We usually had a winter in-service or fall around October and then in January. We've taken those two days during COVID and stacked them at the beginning of the year, so we've always had that. We attempted in the committee to put back, you know, we were gonna do one in-service day this year possibly, you know, and increase it back. But that's when payroll came up with the snafu that we have with schools starting, the tenth being so late. We need eight days of work before we can pay teachers, which would meant that our staff would be, I'm not Miss Gideon. And she has it better about how long it would be. So it would be almost an extra two weeks at the end of the summer before teachers would get a paycheck. And so the committee, knowing that information, decided that this year wasn't the year. But knowing that the tenth is moving further back, we're gonna be faced with the same thing next year. But starting as soon as this calendar is approved, we would look and get out in front of it. So start letting know our families and staff, this is the pay schedule. So in a year from now, that you could budget and be prepared for a different time. So that's where those two days, full days. So right now, we don't have any full days that we can give. Does that answer your question?
It answers the question. Doesn't give me the answer I want, but it's the answer to the question and that it is what it is.
Of the calendar committee.
I know, it is what it is. I mean, I, there's nothing that can be done about that, so.
I can tell you that it is, putting the days preschool is always welcomed. You know, as 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 the husband of a teacher, she relishes every minute that she could possibly get preschool. But also as an administrator, having valuable time and space throughout the year to reteach, re-provide information. Because it's good to have training at the beginning of the year, but then if we don't readdress it throughout the year, you know, how does it work in practice? This is how it's worked in practice. We adjust that and go forward. So that's where those in-service days were valuable that we don't have, but that's where the early release days can fill in.
Okay, so back to the original question. On winter break, we're saying that teachers come back on what day?
Third.
The third, and students come back on the fourth.
Yes.
Which isn't much different than what we did this year. Um, except we, it, families are going to look at that and say that we've shortened their winter break. Just gonna tell you, that's what we're gonna hear. That's gonna be all the feedback we're gonna hear. So be prepared, Board. I I understand, we get, I understand, the perfect storm of November twenty-third has caused this.
Madam Chair, let me, with all due respect, in this process, there will not be a hundred percent anybody liking anything that we do. Um, so our our goal has to be doing what's best for students. What's best for students has to go to making sure that we have the right amount of time in front of the teacher. Right instructional time, that we're in compliance with the laws and we're doing those things. All, some of this other stuff is, are are wishless. That we're, that we're trying to accommodate. If we can accommodate it, great, but we still have to be in compliance with laws. And we still have to make sure that our goal is to educate kids. People gonna be mad. I hate, I, it it sounds rough, but people are gonna be mad. We're trying to do the best that we can here and do with this.
If I may, I realize the the overwhelming narrative was, I'm already gonna be gone the week of Thanksgiving, so expect absences. And now the overwhelming narrative will be, I'm already gonna be gone that week of Christmas, expect absences. Our job as educators is to provide a quality education every single day that students show up for school. That is our job in the schoolhouse. We encourage our families to participate in that learning experience as many days as they possibly can. We have afford and allow excused absences and unexcused absences as part of the learning experience. And what I have assured families is that the the learning experience, even on an early release day, would still be impactful and a- and valuable. So again, to Reverend Cummings' point, we are not gonna make everyone happy. And if a family chooses to take their vacation and have their child absent for days, that is the family's choice in making that decision. Um, and and there's nothing that we can do as a board to make that happen. So what we're trying to do here is make concessions to make everyone as happy as possible with a unique situation that has been presented to us. So again, I I just want to acknowledge, I realize people will be absent the eighteenth and the nineteenth of December.
If I can add real quick, um, with with the changes that we've suggested, that the board suggested. Which is the students come back on January fourth, which is a Thursday, correct? So we're gaining three. So we're gaining three student days. That's going to adjust everything going down the calendar, and I really don't feel comfortable, adjusting on the fly and moving things around, but that will potentially, because right now, with this, this is the original draft that I've been working off of, that we presented before, students' last day was Wednesday, the 29th. Hypothetically, if my math is looking right, that would make the students' last day Thursday, the 23rd, which is before Memorial Day.
Even better.
Which does that.
Or, we give them a day in April.
Well, that, the day in April is already there, because that was on the original calendar, that has not changed off the original presentation.
The day in April is what, Good Friday?
No, sir, that is the midterm break, Good Friday this year is actually, I believe, the 29th of March in '24.
That's correct, okay.
So it's the midterm break.
If we're going back to the original draft, full-circle moment I just had here, are we then keeping spring break the week of the 18th?
Again, the reason the spring break was pushed back was because that whole week was off, coming back, just to even out the days. The way it is now, I hate saying my math without doing it, I believe we're at 48 and 45.
Can we give, how about, can we talk about early release days and give Mr. Ayers 10 minutes, I'm sure early release days will be at least 10 minutes, and give him time to really sit and, and look at numbers, because I, I don't want you to feel pressured to provide numbers and data and, and then misspeak, is that, because the early release days have nothing to do with the other pieces, and that would afford you some minutes to-
Correct, so I, I would appreciate that. So just so that I'm, I'm hearing, I would like to make sure that we have at least consensus on the days, early release days have them not, day of the week does not affect the number of days we attend school. So what I'm hearing, just to reiterate, the full week of Thanksgiving stays. Students would attend 18th and the 19th of December, winter break would start December 20th, which is a Wednesday. Students would return, teachers would return on January 3rd, which is a Wednesday, students would return on Friday, which is a Thursday.
On January 4th.
Oh, the 4th, I'm sorry, the 4th, so they would attend the 4th and the 5th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, did you say that you have an extra day on that side of the semester? No?
That's what he's going to figure out.
So we're going to give him 10 minutes to go from January to May?
And, and if we can keep in the April day off, please.
What's the April day for?
The April day off was a day, two was, Miss Thoreau, remind me, I think it was two years ago that we put that in, as a response from the feedback that we received, that spring break to the end of the year is so long, without any break.
Everybody just needs a breath.
Needs a breath, and-
Restore that is a good thing.
And so to be able to restore that in, because we have the time, the, the days to play with.
Can I also ask, if you're looking at, if there is an extra day that you also consider, reconsider, Good Friday?
Well, it, it would be immediately following spring break in the proposed calendar originally, so it-
Because what I would suggest if we're moving this back, that spring break would get moved back to the 11th to the 15th. And there were minimal comments at the location of spring break.
Right.
I agree.
Right. Okay, I, having March 29th off as opposed to a day in, in April, while I completely agree with, with the purpose and the value of having that day off, when you have a holiday that changes every year and we have no way of knowing if it's in March or April, and we have to physically look it up every time, that continues to cause a challenge for us from planning purposes. So I would prefer having a day off sometime between spring break and the end of the school year, that is closer to the midway point, as opposed to front-loading those days off.
Right, and if, and if some years it ends up being Good Friday, so much the better.
Terrific.
And I was going to say, the first year we did it, it coincided, it just happened to be that.
People thought we did it for that.
Right.
And, and sure, that's a consideration, but it was also to look at the bigger picture of providing a very long, dry stretch of no time and providing a day.
Perfect, okay, so I think Mr. Ayers, we're going, and Vice Chair had one more question, was it for him?
Not for you.
Okay, all right.
But I do have one for the Board.
Perfect, okay, Mr. Ayers, take a few minutes and figure it out for us, see if what we've come up with and constructed on days is going to work for us. Okay, Vice Chair, you have a question?
Yes, well, it, it is a reality check, because with what we're talking about here, we're talking about a short week before Thanksgiving break, we're talking about a short week, I mean, a short week before winter break, a short week right after winter break, and this is where we need to have a conversation with the community about mindset. Just because a week is short, we have to come forward with the commitment that quality instruction is going to be there. Just because it's a short week, things don't stop, your child is going to miss stuff. It, it is appropriate and important instruction that is going to be continuing, and so it's a two-way street. I think a lot of families view early release days, whether they're an hour or two hours, as half-days, they're even called half-days, they've never been a half-day. But I can see their point, because I have experienced myself, quality of instruction has suffered during those days, so it's like, hey, it's not even worth it anyway, so I'm going to pull my kids, we're going to Tennessee to see Grandma for that week, you know? So as we continue to grow and, and elevate our practice as a district, then we need to make sure that that expectation and that goal is shared over and over and over again with the community, so they understand the sacrifice, if, if we're going to do these short weeks before winter break and, and after winter break, that your kids are going to be missing out on quality instruction. And, and that's hard to say right now, across the Board, we know we have a huge employment crunch, you know, it's, but we're trying to move out of that, we're, and, but we can't move out of it by ourselves, we, we need the commitment from the community and from our families, that if it is a day of school, it's going to be relevant education, and darn it, you're expected to be there. You know, if you're sick, you're sick, I get all that, you know, so let's not go down that road.
And frankly, Miss Thoreau, that includes our instructors.
Yes, oh, yes.
It includes-
Yes.
In order to have valuable instruction, it's not just our families that might be taking those two days off, valuable instruction includes valuable instructors.
Well, and when I speak to our commitment, that's exactly, you know, what I mean. That's one reason why, in the end, the Thanksgiving week was-
Absolutely.
Because there was as many kids out as, as there were instructors as well. And my point about the Airbnb, which I just think is kind of amusing when I reflect back, you know, people, our, our own employees are, are making plans to, to travel as well, very far in advance, you know, I, I never used to see that, you know, now I'm seeing pictures of people in Gatlinburg and, you know, everywhere else. So, you know, there's a, there's a commitment here from all of us that, that needs to be, it's reality.
So to that point, we heard loud and clear, give us the full week at Thanksgiving, absolutely, you got your two days back at Thanksgiving, give us your two days over winter break. I mean, that's, that's what reality is, when you look at this, the two days, the Monday and Tuesday, it's either Thanksgiving week or over winter break. We're taking the two days because of the perfect storm of November 23rd hitting whenever it does, or, excuse me, because of the perfect storm of Thanksgiving hitting on November 23rd. Okay, so Mr. Ayers is looking at days of the week, or days for us, and making sure we're getting the calendar correct when it comes to that. Talk to me about early release, or, excuse me, the one-hour, what are we calling it? Dismissal, early dismissal, the one-hour early dismissal, talk to me, Board.
I, I heard, I heard people say they didn't want it attached to a weekend, and I can get that, and I was originally a proponent for Wednesdays, I understood Miss Thoreau's communication regarding why Wednesdays are a struggle. I saw, I saw many comments regarding, you know, that's just going to be that parent's responsibility, the parent who picks up on Wednesday, it will just become their responsibility, because ultimately that is the case, it would, the early release day on a Wednesday would then fall solely on a split household's one parent, because that parent, unless obviously they work out collaborative ways to solve that problem, that parent would be the one that picks up on Wednesday afternoons. So I heard that attached to a weekend would not be great, because people would still, the same as Friday, in that idea, would take that same approach on a Monday. So I, I'm still a proponent of a Wednesday personally, I think it's a, a midweek breath, and, and one of the things, when I spoke to a principal yesterday, who has concerns about, a high school principal who has concerns regarding strategy, what I have told and assured principals that I will do as a Board member, and I know that Dr. Gullett's staff will do, is reach out to districts who have like-sized schools that have been doing this for years. I graduated from a Popka High School, and so I use that as my frame of reference, but I would gladly facilitate a conversation with the leaders at a Popka High School, which is one of the larger high schools in Orange County, so they have similar pain points, they have lots of sports kids, and what do they do with them, and a car line and all of those things. So I think that as Board members and as district leaders, we can reach into our local districts who are doing this to help provide solution. I assured that principal yesterday, regardless of the day, I'm not going to leave them with the problem to solve, and I know that none of us are going to do that. So I, I, because aside from making it valuable, the, the struggle is like, what do we do with all the humans, right, because they're still here, especially at secondary for sports, like, they're not just going to go away for an hour. And, but I do feel confident knowing that there are other schools that are the same size as our schools that are doing it and have been doing it for years successfully, or they wouldn't have it on their schedule anymore, so I believe that we can reach into our network and find solutions for how to do this on our campuses. So I get attached to weekends is not ideal, I go back to Wednesday, which I thought was my best solution, and I thought would be the best all around, and so, I, one thing I did here is the consistency piece, I know we said not to do it the first week of school, but I changed my mind on that, I think we should do it the first week of school, I think we should just hit it from the go, and then I'm the one who suggested May, and I still believe that we should have the full days for testing, I know that they don't do that in other districts, so they navigate that, but I know that we have ESE kiddos who use every possible instructional minute to take those tests, and I wouldn't want to take a whole hour away during testing, but maybe we go all the way through the month of April and just do that, no early releases on, in May. But I do hear the first week of school and having that consistency. So if, if I was going on record, it would be Wednesdays, starting the first week of school, and just not doing early releases in May, that would be my vote, I, I guess.
Vice Chair.
Yes, and I had a pretty hard stop for, for Wednesday, for what were, what are, my rationale was, you know, parents have enough on their plates, anything we can do to make it less complicated, that's where I was coming from, I have a little bit of new thinking on that as far as Wednesdays, and it's because of feedback that I've received Monday and, and Friday from, from lots of stakeholders, more concerns about that than, than about Wednesday in reality, kind of the midweek break, you know, Mondays, everybody's fresh, including the kids, so why make it shorter, Fridays, we don't want that, looking at like, well, you know, why send them, it's an hour less, anyway, that type of thing, midweek, catch your breath, sort of thing. Also, too, traditionally, I believe our early release days were Wednesdays, so people with arrangements have had to broker that through the years anyway, I don't remember getting a lot of anything ever about that. So I, I think that I can come to consensus, if this is what we're looking at doing, that I can move from my hard stance versus Wednesday, although I, I can move from my hard stance on no Wednesday. I have a question, though, and, and it is, and I know that other districts work this out, but like, I'm thinking of Beta Club, for example, you know, and this is elementary, so they can't supervise themselves, they, some things like that are really going to need to be looked at, because, you know, what's a kid going to do, ride, ride home on the bus, if they have a quick bus ride, and then the parent brings them back, you know, for, for Beta Club an hour later? You know, Beta Club, my understanding is they meet Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that's why a lot of parents were up for Friday. So those are just things internally that would need to be worked out, like I said, I, I'm, I have my own thoughts about all of this, but you know, continuing to do the same thing is not always the right thing to do either, we're putting a lot of thought into this, but there are logistical, anytime you try something new, there's going to be snafus, but I, I'm just offering that, that up, that that's going to have to be problem-solved, because, you know, in my head, I'm looking at schools where sometimes, you know, hey, parents are busy, traffic is tough, they, they don't get there on time, what do we do with the kids, even if it's their best effort to come on time for the hour early. And we've got to get this out to the community, too, because we're the largest employer, and these families, employers need to understand that if we're going to be doing an hour early every week, you know, our parents need support. That leads me back to my original point of, this whole thing doesn't happen just because of the five people sitting up here and, and, and our fantastic staff everywhere, this is, you want good schools, you want great schools, everybody's going to have to help.
I appreciate that.
Other thoughts, Reverend Cummings, Ms. Conrad?
I just wanted to share my initial comment at the last work session on Mondays, was a compromise, because we had a hard stop on Friday, we had a hard stop on Wednesday.
Lots of hard stops.
Trying to think about positives and the way to make this work, my original idea that Monday was the beginning of the week, it would be a great way to start off, our teachers and staff members being able to collaborate and get motivated for the week ahead as they approach their new standards and their new skills each week. So that is where that thought process came from, I did receive quite a bit of negative feedback on Mon, for Monday also, so I am leaning back to Wednesday being the best day for the option that we have for early release, our parents are somewhat used to that idea, I think it's a little more comfortable for them, although that, too, also presents some struggles for our community. Nothing, just like Reverend Cummings shared earlier, I don't think there's going to be a perfect fit, but we would like to best accommodate our community as best possible, you know, to meet the needs of the, of most of the people that are having to make accommodations. I do, a concern I have, and this is really elementary, Sarah's always, you know, is pulling the secondary, but on those early release days, we typically have the same students that are hanging out every day, and so I, I do hope that Dr. Gullett and her team will help us come up with some, I know they will be creative solutions, so the, just that the same person at the front office is not managing those 20 kids every week, that they get the opportunity to be part of the training that's going on in our schools, so they're not constantly missing out, because, you know, in visiting with administrators on this early release, one hour that they're getting out, fellowship is a big component, we know that we are losing a lot of staff members, and they really want to connect their teams, and those teams consist of the folks in the front office, you know, they're, they're the glue for our schools, and so just making sure that they're considered when we start looking at options to help our schools with these kiddos that are left on these early release days.
Well, Madam Comrade, I'm so glad you said that, because we are, you know, every district is different, and our district, we are very relational, we are very family-oriented, you know, that has been the strength of our district through the years, that, that, you know, we may have our squabbles, but, but we look out for each other, and we, we get behind and push, and we pull, and, and we need that time, we, we, that, that family feeling is so, so important.
Reverend Cummings?
For me, and I know everybody's had their own hard stops, and I, I approach this thing, I, I didn't, I didn't give anybody my hard stops, because I, I knew this has to be, this has to be a flexible process, because it's so many people involved, we can't be so rigid in just saying that, I'm, I'm not going to deal with this, I'm not going to do that, so I've tried to be as flexible as I can in this and understanding. We did kind of come to a compromise on Monday, and Monday was never my choice, but I, I would have compromised with it if it was going to get us to a point where we can get down the road on this. Wednesdays was, would, would be my choice, and, and I say that because it gives us the opportunity to be able to, as a district, to come up with some collaborations with some community providers, some community groups. One of those groups, we already have in the school, which is a Good News Club for our elementary schools, getting them to, to be more consistent on, and doing that on, on Wednesdays, and looking at partnering with some other groups, some mentoring groups- on, on Wednesdays, and looking at partnering with some other groups, some mentoring groups or whatever. There's going to be some, some lag over, there's going to be some families that cannot um, get their kids at that time. However, we, we can brainstorm and, and work with our superintendent and her staff to figure out some ways to um, to make those product, make those minutes productive as well. So um, Wednesday is my day if we're going to do it, and um, uh, because I heard so many, I, I've heard, I've heard the argument on both sides that they do no good. I've heard that argument that um, one hour doesn't do any good, but I've also heard that they need the one hour. I am concerned about those specials, uh, the musics, the arts, because they have the opportunity to do professional development um, with others in their speci- specified uh, area, which they won't be able to do because it's an hour. Um, so by the time, I, I think about someone driving from Madison Street to uh, Ward Hollins as a music department or art department, your time's gone, um, and it's time to go home. So we still have to take into consideration those things and try to figure out how to make the professional development be as productive and uh, as it can be. So, but Wednesday's my day.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. When I look at all of the different drafts that we have in front of us, and seriously, this is like a lot of paper, I, I'm considering how close we're getting back to the original uh, and potentially even closer potentially to Draft C. So thank you, Ms. Conrad, for elaborating on how we got to the Monday, because we needed consensus on something, uh, but even after we came to that consensus, I know I lost sleep over not feeling comfortable with the consensus we reached. So I am still of the mindset, I am not in favor of a one-hour um, early release, just not, but prove me wrong. And we do it for a year, and we do it on Wednesdays, which is what I'm overwhelmingly hearing, because absolutely no one liked Monday. Not one positive comment about Monday. You get one? You got one?
I had, I had several.
Woo, I had.
And that was the same, of the same mindset, that getting a fresh start.
Sure, I had zero, so y'all got stuff I didn't get. So regardless, it doesn't matter, the community has spoken, and they're going to speak even louder once we, I'm sure we'll have them here on Tuesday night, because they'll actually not be working and be able to come and talk, so that, that's fine. Um, it's terrific. We encourage community engagement. Um, so it sounds like we have consensus on a Wednesday, one-hour early schedule with it going through the entire month of April. I want to pose a recommendation that we've received from a teacher five minutes before this meeting start, started that actually said, have it go all the way through the month of May. And the justification was how stressful May is, that teachers actually might like that little extra 20 minutes they might actually receive at the end of the day on Wednesdays to just take a breath together collectively. So I think we've come to consensus on Wednesday early releases, beginning immediately, so that would be August 16th would be our first one, and going all the way through the month of April. Do we have consensus on going through April, or do we want to consider extending on through May and just make it that way the entire calendar, which would be pretty much really close to what we had in the original draft?
I, I think I would offer Ms. Thor and Dr. Gullett speak regarding, um, I mean, certainly I have experience with extended time and kids needing that. My, my only reason for bringing up May and getting rid of it was that hour for students who need that hour. So I would offer to Dr. Gullett or Ms. Thor, to who have more, more experience than myself to speak to, whether we, whether we use it or not.
You're talking about extended time on tests?
Yes, so in May, yes, for their accommodations. Students who get the full school day, because that is a loose term, it's not identified in number, it's just identified in full school day. So if we shorten the school day, five testing, or four testing days, it's just, I, I want to be aware that that would, would happen, is all.
Um, thank you. Um, Board Member James, to your question, I'm going to draw back on personal experience. Um, I think, stay pretty quiet, because it's not about me, and again, I didn't propose this, but I experienced um, one-hour early dismissal most of my career, and as a parent of three children in public education, um, their entire careers. Um, I can tell you as an educator that when we had early release, um, we often did make those full days in May because of that very thing. That was something that um, was needed, and because of the um, the accommodations, we would often call for, this will be a full day, and we had to notify parents. So that is a consideration, I would say.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
I, I concur, I, we just need to make sure that the parents, that it's all communicated out there. In this day and age, we also have the classroom dojo, we've got the text alerts, you know, the SkyAlerts, all that stuff. And if we decide, you know, and this is what we end up voting on, that there just will not be any early release in May, people will have plenty of advance notice, they can put it in their calendar, and it'll make it a lot easier to remember. And I, and again, we're, we're here for kids, and kids that have accommodations need those accommodations in January, February, March, April, and May, and June, July, and August, and September, and all the time.
Thank you. The, and I, the last thing I'll say, and then we'll have Mr. Ayers come back up, because he's here to give us the last, hopefully, bit of information on this that we need. Um, and this could be looked at as a negative or a positive, uh, but I can see that one hour that we're going to now be proposing in the calendar for Wednesdays, offering actually a competitive advantage to those sports coaches who are non-instructs, because they'll be able to get their students in practices faster. So you can look at that as a positive or a negative, I'm just seeing it. Mr. Ayers?
All right, thank you. Um, I want to start this off by apologies to Ms. Hudgens, who is my high school algebra teacher, who struggled mightily in, so doing this math on the fly, I believe everything is correct, but apologies ahead of time.
Math is hard.
Math is, is, but it's exciting and it's fun to everybody out there.
Yes.
So, listening to what we said before, this is, again, just to reiterate, winter break, which, the last day would be December 19th, the last student day. Students would return January 4th, 2024, with this teacher workday being the third. With that, that makes first nine weeks 44 days, second nine weeks 43 days, for a total of 87 days the first semester. Given our current calendar, where spring break is, where it is right now, that would make third nine weeks 50 days.
Can you confirm where spring break would be then?
Spring break currently, in this calendar, is the 18th through the 23rd.
I know, we just want to confirm.
I'm working off the original draft calendar, which was presented on 1/5/2023.
Okay.
Thank you.
Currently, that spring break is the 18th through the 22nd of March. With that being the day, third nine weeks is 50 days, fourth nine weeks is 43 days, for a total of 180 days. Students' last day would be Friday, May 24th. Teachers would return on Tuesday, the 28th for the workday. April 19th is still the midterm break. If, when I was looking at the numbers, if we moved spring break forward a week, or back a week, to where it is, traditionally has been, which would make it the week of the 11th through the 15th, that would make third nine weeks 45 days, fourth nine weeks 48 days, so it would even out the nine weeks.
I do, too. To make spring break the week of the 11th?
The 11th. The 11th through the 15th, correct.
Then that makes our nine weeks much more consistent.
Equal, correct.
If I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Ayers, with that, are, are there any other considerations, any reservations, any thing that the board needs to consider?
Um, we did, I did look at, obviously, the 29th as a request of being off. If the 29th is off, that would push the students' last day to Tuesday, the 28th, which is after Memorial Day.
That's not going to work this year.
Right. Agreed, agreed. Okay, so based on that?
I already said I'm flexible. I gave no hard stops, so.
He gave no hard stops.
Your last, I don't remember.
Nancy, what was your last comment? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last comment.
Mine?
No, Nancy.
I think she said returning after Memorial Day was not good.
Was a not, it was a no, okay, all right.
And I concur.
Okay.
For students, anyway, and, and I saw multiple emails and, and communication from teachers that were okay with doing that, but for students, and I'm, there are going to be people that are going to not want it, but it, it is what it is. Um, okay, so, Board, do we have consensus with the proposed calendar as Mr. Ayers has um, detailed it for us with our, obviously, start of school, August 10th? Then we have a full week at Thanksgiving, students' last day, December 9th, or excuse me, students' last day, December 19th, so winter break begins December 20th. Teachers return on January 3rd, students return January 4th. Spring break being moved to March 11th through the 15th. We still have April 19th as a weekend off, essentially, in the middle of March to May. Students' last day, May 24th. Teacher come ba- teachers come back for their workday on the 28th, which is the day following Memorial Day. And early release days, or early dismissal days, we need to come up with a new brand for that. One-hour early dismissal, whatever, come up with some brand for that communications team that will happen on Wednesdays, beginning August 16th, and run every Wednesday through April 24th. Is that consensus?
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Just clarity, Mr. Ayers, you said the third nine weeks movement will be, um, how many days now? Forty what?
Five.
With moving spring break to the week of the 11th through the 15th, third nine weeks is 45 days, fourth nine weeks is 48 days.
Okay.
And the other two, first quarter and second quarter, how many days?
First is 44 days, second is 43 days, for a total of 87 days per semester.
And the other piece of this calendar that we haven't taken into consideration at all today is those weather makeup options. The weather makeup options you had in Draft D, personally, at least the first two in November, so again, in the original instructional calendar, we had December 21st and 22nd were our weather makeup days, or January 4th and January 5th. Well, some of that, I think the January dates potentially need to be, well, we already have them in the calendar, so we just need to talk through that. I think November 20th and 21st need to be recommended as weather makeup days, if in fact, we have to do that, because...
I, I, I disagree. I think everyone screamed that Thanksgiving is important, so if we are going to make weather, makeup days, then...
Where are we putting them?
I would say that they need to be on the 20th and the 21st. Like, if I have, what I have heard is that Thanksgiving week is so important, and I want to remind everyone that taking early release hours is the first step in weather makeup days. So, so if we need to make up eight, and, and as graciously, we didn't have to do any days because we had enough minutes in our calendar, and Mr. Ayers, even though he says he's not good at algebra, clearly is good enough to count all those minutes up and figure that out, so I give you kudos for that, sir. So we may very well, if we had a wake, a, a bad weather makeup day, just lose April early releases, there's our four hours we needed to make up, boom, and then we lose Marches, and then we lose the three in March, so...
Hopefully, but it'll never get to more than that, and if it does, truly, we've had a weather calamity, and we'll all have to punt at that point.
Okay, so then, Board, are we comfortable with the December 20th and 21st becoming the first two weather ma- actually, January 4th and 5th, we're already in school, so what, what are the other options for weather makeup days?
I would offer the 19th.
The 19th of April?
Yeah.
Becomes a...
I would, I would want to, to let you know that if we have the days on the calendar, because we have to submit this calendar to DOE, and so Dr. Gullett, I'm sure you can espound on that, but if, if we have the days on the calendar, we don't have to use them, but we, they're on the calendar, Dr. Gullett.
Correct. And as you know, we did not have to, thank you, Mr. Ayers, we did not have to seek any type of approval this year, as long as the board has adopted it, we, uh, the plan, we can make accommodations that are necessary. That, that's the whole idea of putting everything on here, so we can swiftly address the issue, should it become necessary.
My, my recommendation would be December 21st, the 22nd, and April 19th.
It would be the 20th.
Oh, the 20th, you're correct.
Sure.
The, the first two December days, and then the night.
April 19th, and we, and three should be confined, we don't need four, just, I, I'm fine with three, if, if the state doesn't tell us we have to have four, that's the only question I had on that.
I'm, hm, I, I say this, and we have a week off next week, um, for that, but I think with the early release days and the three days on the calendar, that should give us at least, I would say, five to six days, so. And again, the, they're not listed in the order we would use them, but these are the options that we would have.
Okay. Board, are we good?
Yes.
All heads and minds clear? Dr. Gullett?
I was just adding, apologies, I, I, going back to Mr. Ayers' point, um, just a quick math, I think the number of early dismissal, uh, days would be sufficient after hurricane season concludes, so I was just trying to make sure that we had the, the buffer there that we needed, and I think that we do.
Looks like potentially 32 days, if I did the math correctly, and I may not have, I was counting quick. Okay, quickly, sk- grammar's hard today.
That, that kind of goes back to what I was initially saying, on not necessarily starting those um, early release days so soon, because we may end up needing those, those minutes.
I think for consistency's sake, we gotta, we gotta get it from week one. I, I get it.
And there's a lot more early, you know, we have a bunch of them after traditional hurricane season is over, too, to help us.
Right.
Correct, we have, I think, based on quick, quick look, we have like two and a half days worth of, of minutes, so we could get rid of all, i- if we had a horrible season like we did in '04, we could get rid of early releases from December on and make up two and a half days worth of instructional time.
Okay, Board, all heads and minds clear on this? I'm ready to put this one to the board vote on Tuesday, and moving on, hopefully, our community and our staff can see how we have labored on this topic.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Ayers, Dr. Hembro, are we going to get a Draft E?
That, that's, that's...
We're going to make it through the whole alphabet.
I think we should call it...
It'll be Draft Eric, so.
Can we call it final draft? Ha ha, that's oxymoron.
So procedurally, just so that I know what we're going to do, I am going to go back to my office and make a new draft for this. We will call it Draft E.
Or End. Yes.
Draft E, and then for posting, how do we want to get this posted? Because currently, we have a calendar that's posted on the agenda for Tuesday, which is null and void now.
The, the chair can...
As your chair, post the new one as fast as it's ready.
Okay.
And from communication standpoint, please ensure that all communication channels also have this sent out, that this is the new calendar that the board will be voting on on Tuesday. Public comment is available at that meeting, as it always is in every board meeting that the board takes action.
I still think we have public comment for this meeting.
We do, and I'm about to have it.
I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Ms. Conrad? Communication piece, I just, I would ask that um, the rationale and considerations were posted, I think, yesterday afternoon? Um, if you would repost that again with the new calendar, I just, I'm just going to reiterate, we spent a lot of time, all of us here, working on this, and we all want what's best for our schools, but people don't hear what we're saying. So if you could post these um, with the new calendar, um, through our communi- communication pieces, I, I personally would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
With that, will it be, you said post, I know Eric said post, but will there also be a phone call that goes out, say, hey, there's a new calendar that's out? Um, everybody doesn't use Facebook and social...
No, actually, I said all communication channels, it's words out of my mouth, but that's up to the communications team, they're here, because they're about to share Goal Five with us. So with that, Board, I would like to open it up to public comment on the instructional calendar. Is there anyone here specifically to speak to?
Thank you, I think you got a question, Madam Chair.
Real quick, just for clarity purposes, when that Draft E is uploaded, the draft that's currently there will not be taken down.
Okay.
Published, it stays.
That's fine.
They'll see too, but they'll just see the revised draft.
Sure, and it stays in the discussion item and not in consent, absolutely.
What about Draft E, and then in parentheses, revised calendar?
That will have to be in the title, Mr. Ayers.
Sure, Mr. Ayers will handle what the...
To draw people's attention, that this has been a...
Final revision, or something like that.
Progress, shall we say, an evolution.
Something.
We'll put revised draft. We'll put Revised Draft D in the title, and then, Dr. Gullett.
My recommendation will be that we list it at the top, similarly to what we did today, that it was discussed, and this was the revised work session from January 19th.
Yes.
We'll put that on the top.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Ms. Jo Crowder?
Good morning, Board Chair Mrs. Campbell, Vice Chair Mrs. Thrower, Mrs. Conrad, Reverend Cummings, Dr. James, Superintendent Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Mrs. Martinez-Lopez. I'm Jo Crowder, the Coordinator of Fine Arts. I taught for 16 years, 10 of those here in Marion County, as a science teacher and a music teacher. And I'm here today on behalf of Fine Arts Special Area Teachers regarding the proposed school calendar. My two children went through school in Marion County, and one was special needs. And early release days were always a struggle as a parent. But the question is, what's best for our students? Always, what's best for students? And we have an extraordinary number of struggling new teachers and out-of-field teachers. And I hope our parents can understand that what's best for our students is to be taught by highly effective teachers. And without teacher training, we're not building highly effective teachers. So I believe Mrs. Campbell and Reverend Cummings have already made the point that I came here to say today, which is only having one hour of early release for our employees that are, there's one art teacher, one music teacher at most schools, and their content is not related. So they're not going to be receiving content-specific training. I do have some ideas and workarounds for that, and I would need to work with our district and have our principals be on board to maybe offer rotating Mondays, one a month for elementary music, one a month for secondary music and art, and secondary art. So I do have a couple of proposals that I would like to speak on. I'm willing to work for this year with that. It's going to be hard because our county is so large in area, and unfortunately, it would probably have to involve some regional trainings or online, which we know isn't the most effective way of offering professional development. But I would like to have the opportunity for our teachers to be able to get together at some points, and the flexibility in the early release that we can have some content-specific professional development. And I would like to add in, we have had three pilot schools doing an early music grant, and the data from that has proven that having some extra music time in there directly has a positive impact on test scores. And those three teachers who are involved have attended about four to five weeks for the last two years of professional development. And it has made a huge difference to their teaching. So thank you for your consideration and open-mindedness and flexibility today. I know it's been a hard task for you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder. Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
No other public comment.
Is there any additional public comment that perhaps hasn't filled out a form? I see a hand. Ma'am, if you'll come to the podium, we'll ensure you get a form. If the team can, somebody get one for her in the hallway. And if you'll please introduce yourself with your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Margaret White, W-H-I-T-E. I appreciate all your hard work. I know this has been a task that's unbelievably very stressful. I work for Marion After School Program. My staff is amazing. What concerns me is on the half-a-days when we have no parapros that work our program. Right now, we're at seven managers that we're working very hard to fill. Some are absent. My site at Fort McCoy, we have all parapros. It's very difficult on the half-a-days that our parapros cannot come work with us. I've just spoke with someone that said they're working hard on that, trying to figure it out. And also, my comment is, for the days that we're coming back to school, two days in that week, parents struggle with paying that fee and having to find daycare for the beginning of the week that they have to go back to work. So they're paying two daycares. That's, that's what I hear from my parents in the afternoons. Why am I paying for two days a full price? And the rest of the week, I have to pay another daycare? So those are my concerns, and I appreciate everybody's working hard at this. I know my office, Pam Ubanks, they're very diligent with their jobs, and they support us 100%. So I appreciate y'all's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. We certainly appreciate both of these perspectives and the comment that has been brought forth. Is there anyone else for public comment on this topic? Okay, thank you. I'm certain that the team will be working to not only assist all of our specials teachers to ensure they have valuable professional development time, both collaboratively and individually, as well as greater conversation about Marion After School Programs that goes to a much deeper conversation than we're going to have today. So with that, Board, I would like for us to move on to our next item, which is 4.1, our Chief 2026 Goal 5 Updates.
May I ask one brief question? I did email Chef 9, but did not hear back from him. Is there a way? Because I would like...
When Ms. Debick comes to the podium, perhaps she can give us information about Chef 9. Do we have that information? I believe she does.
I do.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, introduce this. As a reminder to the Board, we are on Goal 5, which is Community Engagement and Communications. And I think this is, this is actually very connected to the conversation we just had. As you all know, we are providing regular periodic updates on our strategic plan. It's also a reminder of this is a fluid and flexible pathway. It's not fixed. It is going to evolve as we evolve as a district and see improved outcomes for our students. But appreciate the conversation on balance, and it takes everyone's efforts and everyone's support to help every student succeed. That is not something that I often say, it is not something we just write about. It's something that we live and we breathe. And Goal 5 is part of that. It's the part of the balance of support to make sure that our students have what they need and that our community is very involved. I do want to reiterate again, after the conversation and the guidance from the Board and this last topic, that there's a balancing act. But I am passionate about valuing education and improving the valuing of time with our students and appreciate the community's involvement. You're gonna see this update today, and you're also going to hear about some family engagement work that we're under, that is underway in our schools. But we teach bell-to-bell. Every minute counts. Our children don't get an opportunity to get that time back with us. So when we have them, we teach bell-to-bell, and we appreciate the community's support. So without further delay, Ms. Debick will kick off this very dedicated team representing all of our employees in the work in Community Engagement and Communications. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Gullett and Chair Campbell. To answer your question, there will be refreshments at 11:30 for all of you behind stage.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Campbell, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Gullett. I'm grateful for the opportunity to present alongside my colleagues this morning the work that has taken place on Goal 5. Goal 5 of the District's Strategic Plan is Community Engagement and Communications, which is to increase dialogue, partnerships, and collaboration to meet stakeholder needs and productively engage them in our successes. We know that effective community engagement and communications between educators, students, staff, parents and families, and the community helps to foster a positive and successful learning environment for our students. And that is why we are all here, to help every student succeed. As we work on this overall vision, we know that we need to hold ourselves accountable to the work that is being done to keep us on track. As Dr. Gullett mentioned, the strategic plan is a very fluid document. And since our last updates in May of last year and Mr. Whitehouse's updates, I would like to share with you the updated metrics for Goal 5 of the strategic plan. The first outcome metric, which is the same, is to increase the percentage of families indicating satisfaction with communication. To date, we are 92%, which is above our target. This number is based on the Title I survey, which is open right now. These numbers are based on last year's results. A new outcome metric for Goal 5 is to increase the percentage of staff indicating satisfaction with district communication. We have been in close communication and meet frequently with the Human Resources Department, so we will be putting together a staff survey for this year. Another new metric is to increase the number of families participating in parent partnership events. Last year, there were four parent partnership events, and of those four events, 157 parents registered. To date, we have had two parent partnership events for this school year, and we have had 122 parents register. Our next new outcome metric is to increase the number of families participating in Engage MCPS. This year was the first year that we had asked families to preregister for our Engage MCPS sessions, so we're building that baseline number, so we'll have something to compare to in the future, apples to apples. Another outcome metric that's new for Goal 5 is to increase the number of followers across district social media platforms. Our district's social media platforms include Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and YouTube. Last school year, the total number of followers was 12,513. To date, we have 16,152, with a target of 25,000. And the last outcome metric for Goal 5 is to increase the number of community partnerships for Marion County Public Schools. This is a database that we are currently working on, and the way I envision this is it'll be broken down by subsections of the faith-based community, nonprofits, business partners, so we have a collective view of all of our partnerships throughout the district. To reach these metrics and stay on track, we need to have sound strategies. So it is my pleasure to share with you our strategies and the key activities that have taken place over the past year. Strategy 5A is expand community partnerships to increase student learning opportunities. The first activity I'm proud to share is our first back-to-school community give-back event. This event was held at the end of July in conjunction with Advent Health Ocala and the Community Foundation. At this event, over 6,000 backpacks were handed out to students and families throughout Marion County. What was unique about this event, what is, it was the first time that we had pulled together community partners for a streamlined back-to-school type of event. We also had six satellite locations strategically placed throughout the district at our different schools, so families didn't have to travel downtown to pick up those resources. Something that was started about a year and a half ago were monthly community partnership meetings. The back-to-school event actually came from those conversations and those meetings. It's an opportunity for groups that we're working with to come together and share what they're working on, and then we also have the chance to share what our needs are. So for example, at our next community partnership meeting, we will talk about the instructional calendar for next year, and if there's any opportunities to partner there. It was noticed in those community partner meetings that there was a need to break off and have a separate meeting for the faith-based community. So we meet on a bimonthly basis with our faith-based council. This is a relatively new group of individuals, but it was identified that the needs that we have and the resources that the faith-based community can offer are different than that overall community partnership meeting. So there have been some very productive conversations that have taken place there. We discussed parent partnership. There's actually one being held this Saturday at Bellevue High School, so I'm looking forward to seeing how many families register for that one. And then Engage MCPS. We have held three sessions so far this year, and I know the family engagement team will be talking a little bit more about that in their presentation. Another key activity are career fairs. Last year, for the first time, we hosted career fairs at our high school as opposed to going to outside locations. This year, those career fairs will take place in the spring, so the communications and community engagement team work very closely with the Career and Technical Education Team, Career Source, and the Chamber and Economic Partnership to get businesses signed up. The first one will be held at North Marion High School on February 16th. Additional activities that are taking place under Category 5A, launching literacy in the community. This was a campaign that kicked off right before winter break. We are working with the educational team on resources that offer parents and families the opportunity to give literacy resources to their students outside of the classroom. Additionally, we have identified community leaders and are getting pictures and testimonials from them about what their favorite books are and why literacy is important to them in their careers. We are also working with local restaurants to get some educational activities into menus, so when families and students are out, outside of the classroom, they have something to work on. There's been a lot of collaboration with local municipalities, from conversations with planning and government relations, all of the work on the inter-local agreement. We partnered with Marion County Government on Bring the Harvest Home for the first time last fall. We also had a meeting recently with local law enforcement, public information officers, to open up those lines of communication between our staff and theirs. Veterans in the Classroom. This was a program that was established before the pandemic, and we have been in very close communication with various veterans groups about getting these veterans back into the classroom to share their experience with our students and to be guest speakers. Volunteers and Mentors. We streamlined the volunteer signup and approval process last year, and it's been working very well. One of the projects our team is working on is orientation videos for our volunteers and mentors. So once they do get approved through our system, there is an orientation video that they watch. Business Advisory Council. This is a great opportunity for those in the business community who want to partner with us to increase those student learning opportunities, to learn more about what's available to them. So at these Business Advisory Council meetings, they can learn about guest speaking opportunities and where some of the barriers are that students are experiencing. And then, from a brainstorming session and some collaborative thinking, some really great solutions have been identified. Friday Talks. Ms. Magamal and myself participated in a recent Friday talk with the Chamber and Economic Partnership. Again, another opportunity to get in front of the business community, to talk about what some of our needs are and what some of their needs are too. And finally, Leadership MCPS. We graduated the first class of Leadership MCPS back in September, and from that first class, we have seen involvement in local SAC groups, PTO, PTA, mentoring, volunteers. So the engagement level has really increased because of this class. What I've noticed also is our Leadership MCPS graduates are advocates for Marion County Public Schools. They have a deeper understanding about the amazing work that's happening here, and they're sharing that story with others. We're looking forward to opening up Class 2 in August of 2023, so it coincides with the school year. I would like to introduce Ms. Magamal, who will share information about the work that the Public Education Foundation is doing that aligns with Strategy 5A.
Thank you, Ms. Debick, and good morning, Chair Campbell, School Board Members, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Gullett. The Public Education Foundation is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which serves as the direct support organization to financially and materially support Marion County Public Schools, its students, and its teachers. And when the Foundation's Board of Directors developed the most recent strategic plan, which was for the 2021 to 2024 years, the Board looked at the District's strategic plan to ensure that we identified key areas of alignment. Programs of the Foundation support multiple district goals in multifaceted ways, but we are proud to be a part of the team for Goal 5. I will be sharing a couple of updates on programs that we support, Community Engagement in Strategy 5.0A. First, our school business partnerships. Within the Foundation's strategic priorities, we work to ensure each school has a minimum of one partner. Last year was the first year in more than 20 that every school had at least one partner or more. And we are proud to say that that is continually and successfully moving into this school year with 78 school business partners confirmed. We will exceed last year's number by the end of this school year. And we'll continue to work to expand what those partnerships look like. Because beyond the matching of businesses with our schools, we want to help increase engagement with their partners. Some of the tools the Foundation developed this past year includes a business partner toolkit with best practices and ideas for school-to-business engagement, hosting networking gatherings, including a recent holiday after-hours, requesting recognition at school board meeting, as pictured here on the slides from last April, and ultimately, celebrating our business partners, their relationship with their schools, which we will be doing at the upcoming Golden Apple Gala, as our school businesses come to support the teachers and rookies of the year. The partners provide key partnerships for our schools and a collective contribution of more than $200,000 per school year. And supporting these partnerships based on school and district need is a part of the Foundation priorities. Another example of community partnerships is the Black Stallion Reading Project. This literacy project was developed as a cooperative effort between the Ocala Horse Alliance and our school district. The Foundation's role here is to be the fiscal agent for donor funds and program expenditures. And I know our school... And I know our school board members are quite familiar with the Ocala Horse Alliance's upcoming event, because I believe everyone, most everyone on the stage, will be riding a horse on January thirtieth for the project kickoff for this school year. Best of luck to everyone. The program harnesses, through horses, a way to inspire students to read. It is a literacy project. But I truly think it is a beautiful example of how we are harnessing partnerships with our community to serve our students and ensure their success. And our Golden Apple Academy, which is an extension of one of the Foundation's key programs, Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program. The academy has participants from our Golden Apple Teachers become a cohort of outstanding educators that can work together to support and lift up their fellow educators. But that academy, which goes back to 1991 to present day, even engages our retired educators to still stay engaged with Marion County Public Schools and support current teaching efforts on the ground. And while that academy has been in place for many, many years, there are both new and renewed elements to what our Foundation is working on, including breakfast with the superintendent each semester to discuss relevant and pressing topics that are facing our teachers. The academy supports teacher recruitment efforts in the district, and they were loud and proud at the MCPS Recruitment Fair. Academy facilitation at the New Beginnings Orientation for our new district teachers to kick off this school year, the academy members were the breakout session leaders. They were the first to welcome the new teachers into that orientation. They volunteer at the Foundation's Tools for Teaching Store to ensure supporting students getting what they need in classroom supplies. They serve as key representatives on district committees. And in fact, the Foundation created the first-of-its-kind Golden Apple Directory. We hope that this directory, this is the first draft of it, so I will have copies for all school board members. We hope that this directory will be a resource so that our district leaders and community leaders can see who our Golden Apple Teachers are from 1991 to now and have a way to reach out to them. Because at any moment, when a teacher's voice can be a part of the conversation, when they can have a seat at the table, whether that is discussing professional development, classroom management, or more, we hope that our Golden Apple Academy members will be invited, and this directory will serve as that resource on both the district and community side. And now I welcome Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of Public Relations, to share information on Strategy 5. B.
Good morning to each of you again. Mrs. Conrad, I'm certain that we have a wonderful picture of you in that Golden Apple Directory. I'm here to talk about Strategy 5B, which directs us to strengthen two-way district communication and engagement with families and the community. And I want to give you some insight, share some insight into some of what we're doing to accomplish that. First up, Fast Facts, which I hope you know about, is a quick summary of recent school board decisions that is written in very easy-to-understand, everyday language and posted online and emailed internally to all employees minutes after each school board meeting concludes. Stories often have links to additional information that help educate our community even more on school board decisions. Now, we brought this bimonthly publication back to life, and are seeking ways to make it even more easily available and accessible to both employees and the general public. And that includes increasing or making its visibility higher on our website so that folks can get it in one or two clicks. We, and by that I'm including each of you as a board, are also participating more in highly visible ways at local events, including Christmas parades in Bellevue, Danellin, and right here in Ocala, and just earlier this week in the MLK Day Parade. Great pictures, by the way, I saw those. You looked a little cold, I have to say. Your in-person support at our job fairs, at our transportation events, and employee luncheons lends even more credibility and underscores the importance of these events. District representation in community events continues to increase, and the resulting interaction is personal, professional, and two-way, without a doubt. There we go. With Skylark messaging, we are incorporating action steps in messages via direct web links, survey invitations, and other active paths for two-way communication. We now utilize personal translation for Spanish messages and work regularly to maintain accurate contact information for students, families, and employees. And believe me, this is an ongoing process, given how often people change their cell phone numbers and email addresses. Our messaging is only as good as the contact information we have. And we do share monthly or bimonthly reports with our key administrators. I create those reports and send them, and I call them bad phone numbers or bad contact information. They take that information and work with their staff to get working contact information for those students who are not receiving Skylark messaging. When we don't have accurate contact information, those families not only do not receive district information, they don't really, they don't receive school information either, because all of that information is contained in our Skyward database. So that's an ongoing effort. It will never end. Finally, we are looking at options for a district-wide newsletter to be shared with our community on a regular basis that gives a snapshot view of MCPS, our goals, our successes, and what the immediate future holds. Continuing on with additional steps that we are taking, as mentioned earlier, we are inviting more community voice in active surveys when it comes to topics like transportation, the instructional calendar, imagine that, and safe school concerns. Our annual Parent-Family Survey is open right now and gives audiences yet another opportunity to offer feedback when it comes to what we provide, how we provide it, and how we can improve it. Another way we are increasing two-way communication is sharing quarterly meetings held by ICROC, which is the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, appointed by you as our local school board. These meetings showcase community members discussing how referendum dollars are being spent to ensure the district keeps its promise when it comes to those valued dollars. Meetings are livestreamed and available, of course, on our YouTube channel 24/7. Snippet stories, by now I hope you know what those are, are short videos created by our very own media production team. They're usually two minutes or less. These stories often share the successes of our students and staff members and are shared on social media and our own YouTube channel. In creating our own newsroom, I will call it, with these stories and other content, we have learned and discovered that traditional media outlets turn our stories into their own stories. So we are really becoming our own newsroom, and they're looking to us for news content. That exponentially increases the audience's learning of these student and staff member successes. Finally, customer service training is an ongoing tactic for not just our department, but for everyone who represents MCPS. Communication comes in many forms, and it's our hope that every one of our employees contributes to positive interactions with our students, parents, families, and our entire community. We are working with our Professional Leadership and Learning Department on specific trainings, and we've also created a code of civility that will soon be released. It will come to you, I believe. So communication protocols are clearly shared and expected from everyone involved with our district. I would now like to introduce you to Mr. Greg Davis, our Communications Manager. He will discuss social media and internal communications.
All right, this is a little bit different. This is what it's like on the other side. I appreciate it. I just want to go over our social media platforms real quick with you. In my two years of being here with the district, I've heard a lot of conversation about social media, and I know how much we love to talk about it, but I'm happy to share some of the history with you. And I believe it is also one of our most significant ways to strengthen our two-way communication with our community partners and our parents. To begin with, when I first came into the district two years ago, we only had a Twitter and a YouTube page. Our Twitter platform was created in May 2009, and it currently has 4,180 followers. Our YouTube page was created in June of 2013. It's the same YouTube page that is playing this very meeting right now, live. And it currently has 8,067 subscribers. When I came, I immediately noticed that we didn't have a Facebook platform. However, there was such a need for it that even our parents created their own. So I thought it was very important that we made our own page, and we were able to control the narrative. So I'm happy to say that in November of 2021, we did create a Facebook page, and within one year, it has 3,827 subscribers, or followers. So in one year, we've nearly matched the Twitter in its 13-year existence. We also created an Instagram in August of 2021, or August 2022 of this year, and it currently has 141 followers and is one of our biggest opportunities that we are working on. Going from our content, we can obviously post anything we'd like. We could post videos, we could post updates, we could post calendar updates, whatever it may be. But one of the biggest things that I think we should talk about on the Facebook platform is not necessarily the public comments that we can see, but the direct messages that I receive on a constant day-to-day basis. I'm happy to share with you that our direct messages not only strengthen our communication with the community, but it also builds our customer service ratings. I'm proud to announce that we have received 62 direct messages since the beginning of the Facebook platform, and we have 62 satisfied and positive reviews and conversations with these parents and community members. This is created by active listening, transparent communication, and quick turnaround. I can go over several of the messages that were given to me, but just a quick overview is I've answered questions about job listings and referred them to the correct website to apply for a job, as well as our HR department. I have given rationale on some of the decisions that we have made. I have gotten contacts with our appropriate staff members to help with situations such as transportation, school choice, and food services. And one of the most important things, I have received several recognition requests from parents for our superintendent to go into their classrooms and recognize the staff members with certificates of gratitude, which is a great tie-in to the Wednesday, or the weekly wrap-up, formerly known as the Wednesday wrap-up last year. These wrap-ups have led to positive interactions on social media with families, coworkers, and friends who have shared their positive stories of the employees who are recognized in those videos. You've seen several of them. They post every Friday. And it's been, it's been a huge success with not only getting that message out and the recognition, but also building trust within the community as the message is spread from our very own Dr. Gullett. This also builds visibility from our leadership in the community. And one of our strongest videos thus far was her finance video, where she was able to hold rumors with specific subjects on finance, and we were able to educate our audience as we continue to build these videos. With that being said, I once again want to put an emphasis on our customer service. As somebody who's worked in retail and been in the customer service line for the very beginning of my career, it's very important for us to constantly listen to our audience and use the appropriate social media platforms to produce the content that we're putting out. For example, one of our biggest strategies right now has been to use our Twitter profile for news updates, using our YouTube, obviously, for video content, but using our Facebook for not only photos, news, and videos, but everything that's all related and well-rounded, because that is our main platform. A good example of this, just to show how successful our Facebook has been, and I apologize for, it's coming up, is just an example, in December, we had a post. Of course, we posted several profiles of our Golden Apple Teachers and this awesome opportunity and recognition that we had. And on Twitter, just to show the difference of how successful our Facebook platform is compared to all our other platforms, on Twitter, when we posted the very same post, it received zero comments, three retweets, 14 likes, and a total of 655 audience reach. That same post on Facebook got 44 comments, 13 shares, 200 reactions, and a total of 6,860 audience reach. With that, I will now reintroduce Ms. Lauren DeBick.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. One of the things that I really pride myself on for the communications and community engagement team, things change so quickly in the world of communications, and especially with social media and the algorithms. So being able to stay up to date on professional development in the public relations world and the communications world is very important, which I know all of us do, everyone on this team. So as we experiment and put things on different social media platforms, we are taking a look at what responds the best where, and then making strategies as we move forward. Additional strategies and activities for 5C, for strengthening internal communication and the recognition of employee contributions, is the introduction of the Employee Longevity Recognition. Last year, at the end of last school year, we recognized employees who have been with the district for 40 or more years. We are looking forward to doing that this year as well and are also working with the Human Resources Department on how we can expand that longevity recognition to other employees. Media recognition, we've noticed that several media outlets have taken the approach of creating their own recognition programs for our staff, which has been wonderful. So there are many recognition programs that different businesses or partners create, and we have been in touch with them, and then we celebrate that recognition as well. So that's not something that's necessarily driven by the district, but it's something that we collaborate on and then highlight. School Board Recognition, recognitions have been put into school board meetings for the opportunity to recognize either students or staff, and there has been great response to that. So we're looking forward to more of those recognitions moving forward. Superintendent Visits, as Mr. Davis mentioned, we do receive messages on social media and also phone calls and emails about just people sharing great experiences they've had with our staff. One of the things that we have done and worked with Dr. Gullett on is Certificates of Recognition and Gratitude. So she will go to the classrooms and surprise these staff members and just say thank you, which goes a very long way. And then another activity is Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. This is a recognition program that the district leads, and you have pictured there our 2023 Principal of the Year and our 2023 Assistant Principal of the Year. And then to round out our recognitions, I would like to bring back up Ms. Megan Magamal.
Thank you, Ms. DeBick. Recognizing and rewarding our outstanding educators and staff in Marion County Public Schools' family has always been at the core of the work of the Foundation, in fact, Golden Apple Program from 1991, where we can celebrate those great teachers from being recognized and nominated at the school level and then being a part of the portfolio interview and observation process to be named the Golden Apple Teachers of the Year and Teacher of the Year for the district, along with our school-related Employee of the Year recognition program, which allows each school and each department to nominate an employee who goes above and beyond in their support staff role and helping ensure student success. The Golden Apple Caravan was hosted right before the holiday break, and I was able to see all of our school board members and superintendent during that full day of traveling to eight locations. And what a wonderful way to wrap up Semester One and move into the holiday season, celebrating and recognizing the great work of our teachers and staff. And then the grand finale will be on February 4th. So each of you should have received your invitations. We hope to see you that evening when the Foundation can truly roll out the red carpet for our outstanding educators who deserve the spotlight. They deserve the community celebration. They deserve the business partners coming to help uplift them and support them. We will even have this year our Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and School-Related Employee of the Year up on stage during the gala, so we can give them a moment of well-deserved applause. So I look forward to seeing you all there on February 4th. And now, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Ms. Magamal. Thank you, team. Board, I think you'll see that we've accomplished a lot, and there's still a lot of work to be done. That's why this is a five-year plan. But I really want to thank everyone. But I really want to thank everyone standing before you. This is an incredibly talented and dedicated team representing a lot of great work behind the scenes as well. So thank them for that. But we will continue to adapt to this rapidly changing world of communications and deepen our engagement of all of our stakeholders and look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board, any comments on Goal Five?
I do, I just have some, just some comments. And really, they're just a bunch of thank yous. So being new to the board, but I've seen a lot of you in action from the other side. And so I just want to thank you. Lauren DeBick, I just, the community partnerships that you're working on, you know, yesterday we reached out in conversation and there was a response today as we were, as a board and we were trying to deal with all of the feedback from the calendar. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate you. Veterans in the classroom, that's new also, that Ms. DeBick has been helping with me with. And they're super excited to be part of our team. And so thank you again for making that connection for us. I wanted to also share that the volunteer process has been streamlined so well. This was the first year I had to do the volunteer process because I've always been a teacher. And I was just pleasantly surprised at how easy it was. And I was able to share that with the veterans group yesterday as we start working on lining them up to make these classroom visits. So thank you for that. Megan, super excited about our seventy-eight school partnerships. Also, the Black Stallion Project is amazing. My last couple of years in the classroom, I was in fourth grade. And so we were doing the Black Stallion Initiative where every child in fourth grade gets a book. It's the best unit of the year. And so we just love that, we're happy to support you as the Black Stallion Project kicks off at the end of the month, even though most of us, except for Nancy, are a little nervous about that endeavor because we're
That's an understatement.
We're not really
Ready, I'm ready.
In the eustachian field. But anyway, we're excited, we are excited and looking forward to help you with that, helping you with that. Of course, the Golden Apple Academy and all that it represents and all the work that goes into it. I will be there to volunteer and help you with that. And I'm looking forward to it because there's really, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but there is really no other event that Marion County does to acknowledge the hard work that's going in to our classrooms every single day. And so I'm excited, that day of the caravan was very uplifting and motivating. And so thank you for inviting us to be a part of that process. I think that's it. I just wanted to say thank you. I know that the, the social media piece is huge. I'm excited that we are on the road to sharing our own negative. As you know, from the other end, sometimes there's a lot of negative that we have to incur. And so I'm excited to see that Marion County is sharing its story and all the great things that are going on daily in our schools. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Other board comments?
I just have a brief comment. Thank you, guys. As a team, I think you're doing a tremendous job collectively. I love seeing our expansion of our social media efforts. As a business owner myself, I think social media is the best way to reach your customer. And replying back to those messages and giving instant feedback is tremendous. So I applaud you for that effort. And I know that that, that effort doesn't end at 5:00 PM when you clock out. So I want to acknowledge that. As a business partner myself, and I know Ms. Conrad is as well, I can't stress enough how important it is to our business community to offer principals that twenty-five hundred dollars in discretionary money. So when my daughter got into, when we determined public school was our option and my, and my child got into kindergarten at Madison Street, before I even determined that I would run for school board, I knew that I needed to be a business partner for Dr. Curly because having that money as discretionary money is tremendous. Being able to decide how you support your staff. And it's not a lot, but it is better than none. And so as, I, I just want to implore our vast business community to consider being business partners with our schools. Even if you don't have a direct connection to a school, there are schools that could, could greatly use your participation in the experience of educating our students. And if it's within the reach of your business, I would just employ you to reach out to Ms. Magamal and our Public Ed Foundation and encourage you to be a business partner. It is rewarding and really supports the education of our students and our staff. So thank you. Direct impact, for sure.
I did miss one note, sorry. I've written all over the page, so I'm sorry. Kevin, I also wanted to share with you that the fast facts that you send out, those are, they're very beneficial. I find that a lot of staff don't have the time to go through hours and hours of work sessions and board meetings, but they do take the time to read over your fast facts that you send out. So I wanted to thank you for taking the extra step to help keep our staff up to date and informed. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
And, and this is to all of you, your professionalism, your expertise and your craft simply elevates all of us. Thank you.
I do want to echo. Thank you to all, all of you for what you're doing. I look forward to our Golden Apple event. That gala is truly to behold, something that all need to see. But I also, I, I love the fact that we're telling our own story and we're not having someone else write our narrative. And Kevin, I, I want to say this because I don't think this, sometimes we, this community may not realize what we have in your, in you as a, as a member of this district and as a personality in our community. Your voice is known all around Central Florida. And, and I look forward to hearing whatever you have to say because you're going to make sure it's said right, correctly and accurately. And thank you for being that voice. Thank you for all the professionalism that you bring to the position. And representing Marion County School District. I'm not reading my notes, I'm looking at something else. But thank you for all that you're doing in our district because you really make us sound good and look good. So I appreciate it, Kevin, thank you for that.
And thank you, Board. Now they're waiting with anticipation on what I'm going to say. No, I, I'm grateful for all the comments that the Board has shared. And Board, you know this is my wheelhouse, this is my team, I feel like, even though you're not my team. But these are my people. The, those, we're all members of the Ocala Chapter of the Florida Public Relations Association. So literally, these are my people. We, we work together, we collaborate together inside the school system as well as outside of the school system. And so I'm so grateful for the work that has been put in and coming into the district and seeing this side of it, you know, being the outside perspective for all the years and then seeing the inside of it and the growth and the expansion that has happened. What I appreciate the most, and it was kind of touched on a bit from each member, is the subject matter expert level in each one of you. So while we each know community partnerships and we each know business partnerships and there's, there's nothing like what Ms. DeBick has on the other side as being actually that business partner. And then Ms. Magamal knowing what the donor recognition looks like from the inside, from a nonprofit perspective. And the social media aspect is, is wealth of information from Mr. Davis. And Mr. Christian, with all of his video production experience and being the voice of Marion County Public Schools for twenty-plus years now, as Reverend Cummings said, it, just the subject matter expert level within the group and the team doesn't go unnoticed. So I'm, I'm very grateful for that. The only thing that I'll say, because I know you've been waiting with anticipation because I've actually talked to a couple of you about, I, I'm looking forward to us potentially even expanding our strategic plan and what our measurables are. And so I, we've done a lot of work already to get to some measurables that are going to impact us. I love the Code of Civility and the customer service training. I believe that has potential to become a measurable at some point. I believe that actual viewership and/or engagement on our social media channels becomes a measurable objective. Certainly, numbers of people are great and having followers are great. But once we actually get to that engagement piece, that's when you're really actually impacting because we know that algorithms are going to continue to change. We can't control that. What we can control is the content that creates the engagement. And so that ultimately is going to become, we're not ready for that and I get that. But you guys knew I was going to mention that anyway. And Leadership MCPS, I'm so excited that that's coming up again. I actually was wondering when our next class is going to be starting. And I think our community needs to know that that's coming. But that's actually all I'm going to say. So thank you, guys, for all of your work. Goal Five is my wheelhouse, I love it more than any other goal. Even though it all has an impact on students, every bit of it has an impact on students and staff, this is my wheelhouse and this is my team. So it's not my team, it's Dr. Gullett's team. I'm still like, ah, okay. Thank you, guys. So that's Goal Five. With that, Dr. Gullett, did you have anything else on that Goal Five? Okay, perfect. Thanks, team. So Board, we had discussed just a bit that we will have refreshments at eleven-thirty. We're just a bit before eleven-thirty. If it would be possible, I know the team is waiting to, to present, but I know that our next two items, sure, public comment on Goal Five. Thank you. Again, it's my, yeah. Is there any public comment on Goal Five? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Thank you very much, team, for ensuring that I don't forget the public comment aspect. So with that, I'm not certain that we need to move forward to our next agenda item without taking a brief break. Dr. Gullett, I'll welcome your feedback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a consideration, we have principals that are part of this next presentation that are here. We really appreciate, very excited to have them here with us today. So just as a consideration.
Okay. Well, the presentation is seventeen slides and I'm not certain what part the principals are playing in it and when they're a part of Slide What. And so we can certainly get the presentation started and maybe the principal portion of it. I'm, I'm open to whomever, what is this, who's, who's up? Ms. Hughes or?
Dr. James.
Dr. James?
I'm the one who suggested eleven-thirty. To respect the principal's time, I would gladly push that to twelve so that we can accommodate the principals who've been sitting now for the better part of eighty minutes waiting on us. So.
Okay. With that, then we can move on with our family and community engagement and hope that we can get through it in forty minutes. Not pressuring you, team, not pressuring you.
And if I may, I'll, I'll be quick with the team coming forward. Ms. Sims is going to kick this off. I really do appreciate our principal voice. I'm a big advocate for the principal's voice in all of this. And you're going to hear some information about something you just talked about, participation versus full engagement. So I wanted you to be aware of that and be mindful of that as this presentation unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you. Greetings, Chair Campbell, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gallet. I am Shawna Hughes, Coordinator of Multicultural Education, and I'm joined by Jasmine Finney, Program Specialist. Additionally, we are joined by two principals, Ms. Sirdum and Ms. Sino. Both principals completed the Harvard Institute in the summer of two thousand twenty-two and have implemented research-based practices at their respective schools. It is our goal to provide an overview of family and community engagement. This morning, I aim to share the framework in which authentic family engagement is built. We will address homeschool liaisons, the work and implementation of the Steering Committee, metrics that capture school-based and district-based family engagement, and marketing strategies that increase family engagement. The dual-capacity building framework for family-school partnerships is designed to support the development of family engagement strategies and programs. The framework is a compass laying out the goals and conditions necessary to chart a path toward family engagement efforts linked to student achievement and school improvement. The challenge helps us understand why educators and families have struggled to build trusting and effective partnerships. For the most part, former teacher education programs do not address the benefits and tools needed to work with diverse populations. On the other hand, families may not feel invited or have a generational mistrust of schools and educators. The responsibility for the education essential conditions lies with leaders and personnel. It is broken into two parts, process conditions and organizational conditions. Process conditions are components that must be in place to foster effective family engagement. Organizational conditions address how the organization or school district prioritizes family engagement across the district. Appropriate staffing and adopting integrated practices are critical features of organizational conditions. The policy and program goals highlight outcomes that should emerge for educators and families when the essential conditions are met. These goals can be used to develop metrics and measure capacity growth among families and educators. Lastly, the capacity outcomes serve as evidence when family engagement is present in a school district. While the list of benefits is expansive, this list displays six commonly linked benefits to family engagement. Family engagement is associated with reduced dropout rates and higher graduation rates. Family engagement leads to increased student achievement and reduces absenteeism. Many studies have used family engagement to foster healthy social skills and decrease conduct problems. Acquiring cultural competence allows districts and school staff to understand families' cultural beliefs, values, and priorities, which leads to strong relationships between home and school. Family engagement is embedded in the district's Mission and Strategic Plan two thousand twenty-six. The Family and Community Engagement Team work closely to coordinate events and other family opportunities to learn tips and strategies to support student success. The team collaborates with district offices and community agencies to provide relevant and timely information. Families are natural allies to help each department meet goals. The parent partnerships are strategically located in various portions of the district. Engage MCPS offers a virtual option for families to engage with experts on relevant topics throughout the school year. Survey data is collected to capture parent feedback. Additionally, the chat feature is active and responsive, encouraging two-way communication. Title I schools have a homeschool liaison to support students and families. Homeschool liaisons participate in professional learning to increase their expertise in family engagement. Now we're here a little, here a little bit about homeschool liaisons.
Our homeschool liaisons play a vital role in our schools. These are some of their responsibilities they currently have at their school site. They work with families to connect them to important information, school resources, and community resources. The homeschool liaison takes the time to learn their families and to find the best way to support them. Each homeschool liaison works closely with the guidance department at their school to provide support with attendance and other families' needs. So the professional learning for our homeschool liaisons this year has been focusing on building partnerships with families and the community. The resource we are using to support the learning is, is the book Powerful Partnerships. This book redefines the idea of successful engagement. In, in October, professional learning, we focused on four core beliefs. One, all families have dreams for their children and want the best for them. Two, all families have the capacity to support their children's education. Three, families and school staff are equal partners. And four, the responsibility for cultivating and sustaining partnerships among school, home, and community rests primarily with the school staff, especially school leaders. These are important to the work they do in schools because it's important for them to examine biases and assumptions that they may have about their families. Biases and assumptions can hamper our ability to create effective partnerships with families. Our January third session focused on learning how to welcome, honor, and connect with families. Other professional learning sessions that the homeschool liaisons attended included collaborating with our mental health and wellness department and community agencies so that they gain knowledge of the resources in the communities available for families.
So our Steering Committee is composed of seven principals, what you will see listed on the screen. And it represents students, schools, from elementary, high school, and also our secondary settings. The Steering Committee is comprised of principals that attended the Harvard Institute in the summer of two thousand twenty-two. The Steering Committee was charged with attending the The Steering Committee was charged with attending the Harvard Institute, identifying the Big Three on their respective campuses, and attending regular meetings and implementing academic parent conference structures. This timeline represents the work that has been done since the inception of the initiative and the anticipated outcome. The Steering Committee will lead district-wide implementation based on the learning and implementation at their schools. Additionally, they will determine the tools that we will use to measure sustainable family engagement.
So on this slide, if you take a look at the top, if you're familiar with family engagement, there's a quote from Dr. Map. She's like the guru of family engagement. And that quote is, "By calling them family conferences, we signal to families that we want to include whatever members of the child's whole support network and that the family wants present." So one of our focuses for our school leaders who attended the family engagement education at Harvard are academic family conferences, specifically academic family teacher teams. So in this model, an administrator starts with all of the families together in one area, and the families go over school-wide data based on the area the school identified. The families then are sent to a classroom to go over grade-level data with teachers as a team, while students wait in a separate area to complete an activity. Once teachers review the data with the families, students return to the families and review their individual data with their families. Teachers teach families a strategy, or it can be the students teaching a strategy to their parents. Then the families have the opportunity to share out strategies that they're using that currently are helping their children. There is also an opportunity for families to network with other families. Last, families and students create a goal together based on the individual data. So on the screen here is our schools that are reporting family engagement semester one. So at all of our Title I schools, they're required to have at least a family event linked to learning. Linked to learning means that the learning is occurring during the event, and the learning is intentional, and families usually engage in some standard-based activities. The data above shows the schools so far for semester one that have reported linked-to-learning events. That doesn't mean that they haven't completed an event, but it's just not noted. This data was as of 1/4/2023. As of today, eighty-two percent have reported a linked-to-learning event, and eighteen percent have not reported a linked-to-learning event. So our parent partnership events. We have had two parent partnership events this school year so far. Parent partnership is a collaboration between Marion County Public Schools and the community to support student and student improvement, and school improvement. Our first event, Welcome Back to School, held at Laker High School, had fifty-nine families in attendance. These are the sessions the families could attend. Our second event, Fall Into Learning, held at Westport High School, had sixty-three families in attendance. And then listed on the screen, you'll also see the sessions they could attend. Our next family event, Test Readiness, will be held at Bellevue High School on January 21st. The focus is testing and assessment. Families will be able to gain valuable knowledge about the assessments their children take, tips and strategies to help at home, and will also provide a session on test anxiety. Also available at these events are community resource tables and resource tables and giveaways, such as clothing and books. We are also, we are so excited about these events, and we hope to have more and more families each time. Engage MCPS. These are our live virtual events on various topics offered via Teams. So far this school year, we have had three meetings. Below the title, you can see how many families were in attendance and the views via our YouTube channel and Facebook page. During these events, two-way communication is available via the chat box for families. We also send a survey to families at the end of the event so that we can use feedback to plan future events, sorry. These video numbers are reported as of 12/16/22.
Each event requires preparation, coordination, but currently the events are not attracting the large volume of families that we had hoped for. In an effort to increase participation, we are working with the Communications and Community Engagement Team for their expertise and professional networks. So some of our suggestions are proposed has to be, has been to include multiple communication outlets to differentiate messaging, to ensure families know that each opportunity has a theme and that it is different. We also would like to record messages in diverse voices, utilizing heritage speakers to honor the language of our Spanish speakers in our community. Additionally, we would like to update community stakeholders and advertising, include them in advertising efforts. So some of the places like CF to make sure that they are also advertising as they participate in our events. And then lastly, to survey our families to determine what sessions or information of interest will have them be able to attend our events.
So the Family Resource Center. So we have two family resource centers housed at Howard Academy Community Center. These centers offer families many resources such as educational games, subject area content, parenting resources, and these resources are available via our Title I resource van as well. Students can, our schools can schedule the van to come park at their school so families have access to the resources to help their children. So far, our van or our district homeschool liaison with the resources on hand has visited twenty schools or family events.
Now we will hear from our voices from the field. We are joined by our members of our Steering Committee, two of them at this time. You will hear from Ms. Sirdum and Ms. Sino regarding their experience and implementation.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Good morning. Not yet at noon. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Jordan Sirdum, the proud principal of Fort McCoy School, and I'm privileged to be here to speak to you today about the family engagement initiative that we have going on in Marion County. We have amazing things happening in our schools. I was privileged to be part of the group that went to the Harvard Institute this past summer, and I had a lot of takeaways, but for time, I'm going to talk to you really about two. So the first takeaway that I believe Dr. Gullett alluded to was the difference between parent involvement and family engagement. We've often look at how many people are coming to these events, and that is important. We want them there, but our families are engaging differently now. It's a different, if it's a different environment, and we need to have different opportunities for them. We don't just need them to be there, we need them to be engaged. We need them to be armed with tools to take back and work with their children at home and be part of the school team to give that success to their student. I think about our strategic plan, and I think about our instructional framework. And our instructional framework really focuses on student success. And three things stand out to me that line up with family engagement: relationships, environment, and engagement. If our schools do not have the relationship with our families, if we don't have an environment that feels safe for our families, school can be a scary place for a lot of families, and people may not have had great experiences. If we don't welcome them in, if we don't set up that environment, if we don't create trust and relationships, then we can't engage them. So that is a tie for me and our school. At Fort McCoy, we have amazing involvement. We had a Donuts with the Grown Ups event that Dr. James attended. We had over three hundred and fifty families attend. They want to be there. They want to be involved. They want to support their children. That was at seven-ten in the morning, so shout out to Fort McCoy families. So now we're looking, given this new learning we have, how can we engage them when they're there? And how can we arm them with the tools to go home and support their children? So I'll just share one example of our first family event that we had at Fort McCoy. We are pre-K through eight. We're the only pre-K through eight in Marion County. And we started with our youngest learners. Get our families in early and hook them is kind of our thought. So we had a pre-K through second grade partnership event. During that event, I presented data to our families. Every school's data is going to be different. And at Fort McCoy, we noticed that while UFLY, which is the University of Florida Literacy Institute phonics program that we have in place, is supporting phonics and phonemic awareness for our students, our data is lagging in the area of high-frequency words. So students are not able to recognize some of those sight words and high-frequency words with automaticity. So that's our focus at Fort McCoy. So I shared school-wide data and grade-level data with our families. We had about forty families in attendance for this first event. What was really exciting for the families was I shared some research from the Texas Journal of Literacy Education that just thirteen words make up twenty-five percent of everything you will read. One hundred to two hundred words make up fifty percent of everything you will read. I am a mom. I'm a mom of a kindergarten student at Fort McCoy, and that's doable. I can, I can help with that. I can reinforce that at home. So giving our families those digestible chunks where they feel like, okay, I can do that. I can help with that, and that makes sense to me. So then our families receive their own child's data. So from quarter one, every grade level is focusing on certain high-frequency words. And they found out, okay, how did my kiddo do? They came back to the rooms with the teachers, and they were engaged. I participated as a parent, as a kindergarten parent, but engaged in things that we can do at home with our children. Bingo games, card games, flash cards, fun ways to engage them with these high-frequency words. And then the kiddos came in, and we got to actually play the games with one another. I was sitting next to some grandparents. We do have a lot of grandparents that are raising children, raising our students. They were like, wow, this makes so much sense. I can do this. I didn't know what these words were about. I didn't know why we were doing this. Just like we need the why, our families need the why. So just a piece of data to share before I stop my chatter. Ninety-three percent of families that attended our pre-K through second grade partnership event, ninety-three percent of those students made growth or maintained mastery in quarter two of their sight words. So it's working, and we're just going to continue that momentum, and I'm excited to be part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sirdum.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Sino, proud principal at Ocala Springs Elementary School. Thank you for listening to us today and letting us bring our experiences to you guys so we can share the successes we're seeing with this engagement. One of the things, and Jordan touched on it, that I took away from the Harvard Institute was a mind shift for me. And I think it's vitally important that as a principal and a school leader, I need to model that I continue learning. So I have shared with my staff, I have shared with my families and even my students that engagement means that everyone is involved. I always thought, oh, good, let's see what our attendance was for our family events, but it's so much more than that, and this has led into big success for that. So one of the part of the ways, and Ms. Sirdum touched on those little snippets that we can share with families that are doable, is I met with my faculty, and we developed a Big Three, and that's one of Ms., or Dr. Karen Maps' ideas for getting families engaged is giving the families three things in reading and in math that they can work on their student, with their students at home. So I'm just going to share something. My teachers developed this. My staff was involved. They developed what was important for their grade level, three things at home that their kids could be successful with. So for second grade, this is just my example in ELA. I can fluently read grade-level text at a hundred correct words per minute. I can fluently and accurately read the first two hundred Fry sight words. And number three, I can read and answer questions about a text using who, what, where, when, why, and how. This is posted in our office, in our front office. It's in our classrooms, and I share it in our weekly email with families. So one of our family events that has been successful in the past is our Reading Under the Stars night, and we do it on an evening before Thanksgiving. And this year, we had seventy-six families attend. And what we've done in the past is we've had a read aloud, we do hot chocolate, we play a couple games. The students have their blankets with their families in the courtyard. They bring a book. But this year, we took those Big Three ideas, something from each grade level, and had an activity with that, too. And we got to see the teachers and staff leading those activities and the families engaged with those. So that was very exciting. And then going back for, back to our second grade Big Three. From winter, so we all know the students are taking the Renaissance Assessment, the Star Reading Assessment. And from fall to winter on their assessment, second graders grew twenty-three percent in proficiency for reading. So just to give you an idea of how this is going in the initiative and the work that our families are putting in that we're so excited about.
Thank you, Ms. Sino.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ms. Sino and Ms. Sirdum.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We have another slide or two to go before we can actually say thank you.
Almost there. Thank you. Our goal is to increase and sustain a culture of high family engagement within schools in the district. To accomplish this goal, we plan to send Cohort Two to Harvard Institute through our Title I funding in the summer of July 2023. We want to develop a strategic rollout, district-wide family engagement staples like our academic parent nights to school leaders and establish clear measures to capture data to track progress and impact. The family engagement team will continue to provide quality professional learning and resources to homeschool liaisons. Superintendent Gullett.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Hughes, and thank you, team. Thank you to our wonderful principals for being here and spending the time. We are so grateful for the work that you guys are doing every day. And I think, Board, hopefully you're seeing the purposeful steps we are taking to help engage our community. Just as a note, and we've talked about this, Dr. Karen Map is widely recognized for really providing very specific strategies and support to schools. And one of her key focuses and is widely known for, her work that I followed for many years, is in our diverse campuses, diverse populations, and engaging those who might not know how to engage in our schools. And I think that's critically important in our culture and in our district here. So I just want to say thank you again for being with us and all the great work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and thank you to the team, especially to Ms. Sirdum and Ms. Sino. Not that the other two of you aren't valuable as well, but we know that you have been taken away from your school campuses for a significant portion of the day. My hope is that you also can go back and share with your families. When they see this calendar, they can hear how the Board really put a lot of work, and so that delayed us today in hearing you. But, Board, I would like to open it up for you for comments and questions.
I'll start. I'll just say quickly to all of you, what you are doing is so critical to this mission and how you are distilling it down for families so that they can really make a difference in their child's education and do it in a way that makes sense to them, that they can actually do and have fun with. That is just the key to all of it. And when I first moved to Florida a long, long time ago, we had sixteen acres in Goosekey Prairie that we developed from the fence posts up. So I'm very familiar with Fort McCoy and a little further south, Ocala Springs. And, you know, country folks can survive. And you're helping them do that and really elevating their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gullett.
I was just really excited by what you had to share this morning. And for me, this vision of your top three things that you're working with on each grade level is exciting to me, especially coming right out of the classroom. And the list of standards and accomplishments that you all are tasked with reaching every single day can become very cumbersome. And so I love this idea of your top three things, like, what do I have to know? And I'll just add, especially, especially coming out of COVID, we know that a lot of our children are behind. And so you're not just trying to teach your curriculum, you're trying to catch up from last year's curriculum. And so I am grateful for the work that you're doing and in thinking about the conversation that we had this morning with our calendar and our hour that we're going to have in the end of the day. This is just me speaking as an individual. This sounds like it would fit perfectly into some of that time allotment at the, you know, on a Wednesday afternoon for an hour. How are our three top things going in second grade and third grade and fourth grade? And I love that it's so applicable. And I love that it's so applicable, that it's something our families can take and do at home. Because sometimes, you know, with the fly, what's the name of it again, the UF fly? You look at it and it's, it's a little overwhelming, even with someone with a primary background, you know, in teaching reading. And so, I love that you're able to break that down if it's an event under the stars, which I absolutely love. You know, and they can see there's modeling going on and, and parents and grandparents are able to see that this is something I can do at home and help my child or grand's child see improvement in, you know, in their reading scores. And so, thank you for the work that you're doing and helping our families meet the needs of their children and opening the doors for communication, communication and engagement on that level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Reverend Collins.
Thank you, guys, for this presentation. Couple of things I saw in this that was very, some things that I've said several times before. And then there's one thing I wanna add to this, and that one thing that I wanna add to is, I think our, our, our family engagements, these engagement settings are, are doing well. But the one thing I'm lacking in seeing is the buy-in from the feeder schools, from the schools that are attached to these schools. Because I think, every time I see, every time I see there's an engagement, I, I go around to see what's going on. And oftentimes, the schools that are attached to those schools are not even announcing it. So, it's almost as if you're missing a group of people that could possibly be coming. So, there has to be buy-in from every principal in that area. If they're in Fort McCoy, then Ocala Springs has to be buying in on it. And the East Mary has to be buying, everybody has to be buying in so that we can maximize the number of people coming to these events and participating. And, and that one thing I saw, Shawana and Ms. Hughes, in this presentation that I've, I've often, I've often, often thought of is that sometimes parents aren't engaged because they are, they do feel undervalued, underestimated, marginalized. They, this, the system is intimidating to them, and they've had some bad experiences when they were in school or just having a interaction with a parent-teacher conversation. So, I, I, I thank you for addressing that in this and realizing that those are areas that we have to work in. Great presentation, I'm, I'm looking forward to every one of our parent engagement or family engagements getting better and better and better and better and stronger. Because I truly believe that our district will be strong, our academics will be strong when the parents, when the families are active in the process. And I know oftentimes, this board and the past boards have said, we need the family, we need the family, we need the family. Well, this is, this is an attempt to get the family and to not talk above them, but to talk where they are. So, thank you, guys, for the presentation.
I do have one more comment I missed. Okay, sorry. Going back to Slide Nine, Academic Family Conferences, this is something I actually, I got to talk with Jordan about when I visited Fort McCoy. I really loved that piece also, that sometimes, especially with the example of a grandparent maybe being in, in charge of, of leading their children, their grandchildren through education, the expectation has changed so much since they went to school. And so, sometimes a slip of paper comes home and, and, oh, they, they're, I'm just throwing a number, you know, fifty-three percent. They need to be at eighty-two percent or whatever that is for the second nine weeks. And so, when they get to come in and you get to show in a non-threatening manner, this is where our school's performing, this is where our class is performing, and this is where we want your child to perform. I think that makes it so relative and the goal becomes so clear. I just think that's very valuable. And then I have a question with that piece, just because this is something I feel like most schools struggle with. A lot of times, the parents that we need to meet with the most don't come to our family engagement activities. And when you all went to your training, did they have a recommendation? Like, is there a piece of that that we can help you with or something that we're specifically missing to draw in all the families that we, of course, need to see the most?
Great question and, and great concern. Our homeschool liaison is a big help with that. He is doing a great job building relationships with those families. When he's making calls about attendance or anything else, he's attaching our events to that. But a big part of our initiative is the relationships with the teachers. If the teachers make those personal phone calls, and we've even offered them time to do that, to call the parent, tell them about the event and ask them to come, that makes a big impact too, that we need them there, we need their partnership. And, and we're gonna improve on that in our next event. Our next event is February twenty-third, and that's gonna be a big piece of that, is calling the ones that we don't see as much.
Thank you.
I would like to also add to it from that training, some other options that's usually offered by Dr. Mapp is flexible timing, if parents work at night, offering them the daytime. Also, through COVID, we have learned that virtual experiences work very well too. So, giving them an opportunity for virtual and then also being able to take what we offer in schools out to communities. So, sometimes if it's an apartment complex, to be able to work with them and offer those types of opportunities for families in that location. So, there's a variety of things, but it's based on what families say they need and what works for them.
Okay, I absolutely love that piece. And so, can you give me kind of a visual on what that looks like? If you, if you see that there's a certain area, an apartment complex or a community, how are you all tackling that? And what does it look like? What kind of resources are you using? How many people does it take? How do you meet that need?
I've implemented this in another district.
Okay.
So, just as suggestions for how to reach those groups. But from my experience in the past, what we usually did is had the school, the homeschool liaison, what we call them in our district, also pair with someone like a reading coach or a math coach, and they'll go out to provide those parent workshops. And again, those parent workshops are linked to learning, that give parents the opportunity to learn a new tip or strategy that's going to help their child. So, they'll just take those items out there, the same thing that you're offering. At the school, you'll just take it to them, and it does build relationships as well. Because if they live there, then that's a great opportunity for them to just stop by and also let them know that the school is really invested in partnering with them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. James.
I just, I'll be very brief. I wanna say I feel super honored that I represent District Five and we have two tremendous District Five principals here. So, they both do a tremendous job. And I spoke to the Donuts with Grown Ups, I guess, last, in December, at some point I mentioned it. But when I pulled up at like seven twelve and I had to park on the road because there was literally no parking, I was immediately just shocked. And then, as I, I walked through the office and, and every clerk possible was just typing away to get people checked in. And then it was like this snake of humans, and then we're borrowing donuts that were in the, Jordan was like, well, I have more, I was gonna give them to the staff, cuz they had to order more the night before because they had only had a certain amount of parents registered. But then this overwhelming response of people showed up. And that is, to me, just one picture of what we're doing across the district. And our leaders across the district are taking this learning opportunities through this institute and digging deep with their staff to come up with ideas, to engage our families and bring them into the learning experience on our campuses. And it is a beautiful thing. And I think we have grown tremendously as a district in just the last year with this, and we will continue to grow and reach our communities. And so, I just want to applaud the effort our, our, our school-based personnel are doing to make all of this happen because it does not happen in the traditional work hours. And the effort you're, you're giving is applaudable. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Board, and thank you to the team. I have just a couple of, of notes that I took as well. I, I, I don't want this to be perceived as negative, so let me first start with that. I'm very grateful to hear the update from the Harvard Institute because I'd known that a group of folks had gone, but we hadn't heard what all you did and what all you've come back with and how that's being implemented. So, my favorite is that we heard today, not only that you went and it was an enjoyable experience, but also how you actually have implemented that professional development on a regular basis and also the impact that it's already had. Incredibly significant and just shows the value of what that opportunity is. And I can completely understand why it's added in as what you're gonna do this next year to bring a whole, another cohort there. And I hope all of them will bring back additional information that everyone else can implement. So, that's terrific. Something I did note in Ms. Hughes' presentation was that the homeschool liaisons took, I think it was Ms. Hughes, took advantage of our full days of professional development, that we've just potentially approving a calendar that we won't have those anymore. So, I think that will be up to the team to ensure that we have some way that those homeschool liaisons have the ability to collaborate and receive professional development. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but noted. I just wanna mention that because you definitely highlighted how those four days of full-day professional development impacted your department and that team, and we're not gonna have that next year. So, how that works, I'm hoping we're gonna be able to come up with a solution. Additionally, with the parent partnership-focused events, and this isn't a negative at all because it's spectacular that they have themes to them. I'm sure I've heard that promoted, but I'm just trying to think how I've heard, maybe I haven't. But if I knew that there was a parent partnership event in my community specifically on test readiness, and I knew that my child, and I knew it was specific on test readiness, I may drive forty-five minutes to get to that. You know, I'm, I may make that extra effort, and I'm not certain, perhaps it is being done, so please correct me. But I'm not certain that we are actually promoting more than just a parent partnership, that this is parent partnership on test readiness. And here are your essential measurable objectives that you're gonna take away from this whenever, these are the options of what you're gonna be able to learn. And that's just one example, because it may be in the future, I'm not putting this on you now, but it may be in the future, especially as we have these thematic parent partnership events, that we say, we're offering this theme in four locations on the same day. And we're offering this next theme in four locations on the same. And I don't know the answer to that, that's a lot of work and a lot of people, a lot of manpower. But again, as we're creating themes to these parents, it's not just we're having the same thing every time, but we're actually having new information that parents could receive at each one that they could implement in their own family. Let's, let's stop using the word parent there, and I'll use the word family for family engagement along the way. So, those are just the takeaways that I had. You guys are doing a wonderful job, this was a fabulous presentation, actually to get us a bit up to speed on some of the things that you have been doing all year long, and if not two full years, that you've been working on this. And seeing how it ties into our strategic plan and student learning and how things are changing and evolving already with how growth is occurring with our students because of this family engagement is very powerful message. So, thank you for sharing that. With that, is there any public comment on this specific presentation? Seeing no members of our public here other than district staff, again, I want to thank Ms. Sino and Ms. Sirdam for coming into town for a bit and sharing half your day with us. You might have an hour or two left with students, if you make it back there, it's gonna take you both a little bit of a drive. But very grateful also to the team for coming in and spending time with us today. We appreciate all that you all are doing to help every student succeed in this district. Thank you so much. Dr. Gullett, did you have anything else on that?
I, just briefly, I'm sure, thank you, as we wrap up, and I don't wanna keep you guys, you guys can go, they're, they're rock stars, they have a lot of work to do, thank you. Board member Conrad, you brought up a, a really good point and asked a question about what does this look like? There are some additional ways, again, thinking differently, I know some schools do this, but I too had a lot of experience with, like math in your neighborhood, having sessions at the local grocery store, community centers, parks, going where, you go where the students are and you engage them in learning, you engage the families. You bring food, and those could be very successful, right?
Yeah, it's, it's something I feel passionate about, especially with my Prime and Merry education. And, and one of the thoughts I have on that in the future is we have a lot of libraries that are sitting empty during the summer. And it's something I've been working on for several years because my school, their particular library is closed, and it is in an area of need. And so, this would be a great place to have an activity like this throughout the summer. I did have one other question for you, Dr. Gullett, we had, cuz this was before my time, we sent seven people, it's seven administrators went?
I think that's right, we had a cohort that began.
Are we looking at doing that same size of group again, and how was that selected?
I think, in your last slide, which I think we've moved on from, they're gonna send the assistant principals. And then, yes, we're gonna have, broaden the group. So, we use those title dollars to get the steering committee started, and the plan is to expand that. Absolutely. The other, just really brief item, and I think it's already been mentioned, but I think we need to change our language and our strategic plan from parent to family, right? We need to talk about the family unit. And so, we, I think we have in places that says parent, but I think we need to have family because we do talk about the whole family. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. So, it is twelve oh three, Board, I would like for us to take a quick recess, possibly for about twenty-seven minutes or so. Come back at twelve thirty to finish the last of this agenda, talking about school staffing plans. And so, when we come back at twelve thirty, I will also let the Board know that we do need to have a hard stop at two o'clock. So, we, hopefully, Ms. Morant, we, we're crossing our fingers we're gonna be able to get that done. I am having faith. So, with that, Board, let's take a recess until twelve thirty. Thank you.
Are we, are we not doing the shade session?
Not today.
And we are back out of recess at 12:31 PM. So with that, Dr. Gullett, we are on to item 6.1, School Staffing Plan ratios for 2023-2024 school year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, good afternoon, and I'm going to introduce Ms. Morant. Again, a team, and there was a lot of input from, from different stakeholders. I'll let Ms. Morant give you some more specifics about that into these ratios, and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Morant.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning, Dr. Gullett. Good morning, Chair Campbell and members of the board. I am Watsonisha Morant, Executive Director of Human Resources, and I'm excited to share the draft staffing plan ratios for the 2023-24 school year. Human resources, along with the Chief Operations Officer, Chief Academic Officer, Chief Financial Officer, Director of School Choice, ESC Director and Area Superintendent, and an elementary, middle, and high school principal, made up the committee to develop the proposed staffing ratios. The committee met prior to winter break to review the current staffing plan, review staffing plans from other districts, and to establish a wish list. The committee was also tasked with going back to their respective areas to gather additional information and to then prioritize their needs. The committee met a second time after break. Some of the wish lists and discussion items included: one-to-one kindergarten para, a one-to-15 ESOL para, 11 additional behavior texts to be able to have representation at all of our elementary schools, student service manager listing that as an individual category for each school, adding a media aide to elementary, increasing the classroom sub-allocation based on school enrollment, adding a bookkeeper to all of our middle schools, adding an additional bookkeeper to high schools based on enrollment, and adding an additional clerk position to high school based on enrollment. After a very lengthy and robust discussion, the document presented to you is where the committee ultimately landed. I will take a moment to walk you through those proposed changes. There are currently no proposed changes for exceptional student education, but if we move to elementary, touching on our first proposed change is to add a line item or an ability for principals to have an additional assistant principal for enrollment of 1,200 or more. And as we're moving to site-based budgeting, we know that's the end goal. We wanted to add flexibility for our principals, so not just saying you have to add an assistant principal, excuse me, you can also sub that out for an additional instructional support. That next line that's highlighted for you under instructional support, we just cleared up that language, so it was clear there was some confusion when it was taken back to our respective areas. And then same thing for art and music, just ensuring that schools realize they get one per school and not having to choose between the two. And then adding a behavior text, so I'll pause here really quickly. A big, a lot of discussions surrounded this area. So currently, we have behavior texts. It's one per school with our SEC, ESC, unit. So now we want the ability to add flexibility that if it's based on need, and we are going to take out tier one, so it'll just be behavior tech based on specific student needs, we're able to budget, or we want to budget to be able to have enough to add to each school, or if we need to add two to a school, but realizing that every school's need is not the same, but having that flexibility that we're able to review and determine or have that ability to add it. I would like to point out a note at the bottom, and I'll touch on that a little later as well. It's the bottom of each of our respective staffing plans, is that units may be added or removed based on student needs, programs changes, and/or enrollment changes. And that goes back to the point I just made, that we realize that every school is not the same. No matter how much we vet and work on the ratios, it may not be a one-size-fits-all based on that. So we are ensuring that we've added that or continue to add that, so we can address needs as needed. Moving, let me pause. Do you want me to present all three areas? Or would you like to pause in between each level?
Okay, board, do you want to pause between each level?
Sure.
I would.
Okay.
Because I think the needs are different.
I agree.
Okay. Board, first questions on the elementary level changes that you're seeing.
Okay. Just real quick, one question that I have is do we, and it may be on here, and I apologize. We had assistants that helped with lunch duty in the elementary schools. What are they called?
Cafeteria monitors.
Cafeteria monitors. Do we still have them, and are they a part of our plan?
We still have those, but they're not a part of the staffing plan.
Okay. What separates them from our part of our staffing plan? I just don't know the answer to that.
I'm going to turn to Ms. Boston Ellis, but I think it's the way that they're funded. Yes, because they're funded, they're not funded through the district funds.
Okay. And that's just a very important piece of getting through lunches. You know, all of our elementary schools, really all of our schools. It, you know, they start early and they go almost to dismissal serving lunch. And on the elementary level, you're dealing with opening milks, opening Capri Suns, ketchup, I mean, cutting, peeling your orange and your apple. It is a very intensive time. And so I just feel strongly that we still need those individuals on our campuses. So thank you for that clarification.
To that point, Ms. Boston Ellis, is the funding going to be there next year for those positions?
And I'm going to, if I may, Madam Chair, jump in to say as a reminder to the board, the ESER funds will conclude next year, 2024. So any fun, it's okay, Ms. Boston Ellis. Any, any funds that we have and all of those positions that we have there, that, those funds are anticipated to go away. So just another factor that we have to consider as we, that's why we're very mindful with regard to the requirements for ESER. Very strict guidelines, but also in sustainability of funds in ESER. So that's something that we'll have to consider, along with the other positions.
My understanding is they're paid out of the food program, not out of ESER, though. Ms. Boston Ellis, you are sitting way too far away. I saw you. You moved even further away. Back to your seat. Welcome, Ms. Boston Ellis, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon. I didn't want to disrupt her flow, but you are partly correct. Originally, the cafeteria monitors were paid out of food service, but they have experienced some financial difficulties, and there was an opportunity to pay for those positions because the schools did ask for them, and because they don't have the other support that they originally had. So as Dr. Gullett said, in two years from now, ESER funds will go away, and then we'll have to reprioritize, you know, what we need to do with those particular units. They are part-time. Some of our employees do work as monitors based on their schedules, but that is a part-time position.
So then, we will have cafeteria monitors next school year, and then this board can revisit that again this time next year about cafeteria monitors and funding sources going forward. Is that correct?
Yes, we will have to revisit it, because those funds will be gone.
And not trying to put pressure at all on the school-based budgeting question, but will we be, we'll obviously be 365 days closer to school-based budgeting, but that still doesn't really answer that question. At some point, the cafeteria monitor could be a principal decision based on the number of students, based on, and the principal would be funding that out of their school-based budget, potentially?
At this time, I wouldn't say that in two years we're going to be full school-based budgeting, because there is a lot of work that we're going to have to do in terms of training, not only the operations staff, but also schools.
Right.
So I wouldn't commit to that.
No, no, and that's fine, but I think it is a good point for our principals to be aware that this may be something you need to be considering, and how valuable these individuals are for you, and what that cost factor looks like. And while we're not training them on it yet, and while we're not there yet, it's just a piece to the puzzle to start explaining to them where we're going. Dr. Gullett.
Yes, Madam Chair, along with other positions, for example, graduation facilitators and others, as those positions are in place, it will, it will, the goal will be for the principal to decide what value they get from those positions and be able to have the ability to make the decisions that are best for the school community.
Madam Chair, a quickly question, and I guess it's to Ms. Boston Ellis and Ms. Morant. With this, I'm looking at this, the homeschool liaisons, are they coming out of a different budget as well? Okay, are they ESER-funded? So then, we're also going to be looking at several positions that could possibly, that will fade away after the ESER funds are exhausted.
They're currently being paid out of ESER, but we are looking to be able to move them into another special funding source, depending on the allocations that schools receive.
Thank you.
I think we're going to have to relook at how a school looks.
Right.
Period. And we'll have to make some really, really important decisions in the next two years about our staffing, because as you all know, that's our largest cost, that and employee benefits.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Boston Ellis, because that's a top-to-bottom conversation. It doesn't just end with school-based staffing. There will be district staffing conversations that have to be held, and I will make this statement, as I've made it multiple times before. We are here because of students. We have money because of students. And every dollar we have is because of students. So when it comes to students being directly served and/or supplement and additional support within the district, there will need to be a really hard look at what that looks like across the board. And will there be needs in a school that potentially are not as needed at a more of a global district position? I don't know the answer to that. Those will be very tough conversations this board is going to need to start having and start thinking ahead to, because schools, as Ms. Boston Ellis said, what a school looks like may look very different than what it does today. And it certainly already looks different than what it did two years from now, or two years ago. So additional questions on elementary? I know I have one, but I want to give you guys the opportunity.
Yep, I have some. Okay, go ahead. Were you finished? No.
Okay, Ms. Conrad, go ahead.
Okay, so, and we did talk about some of these. Thank you for meeting with us in person and kind of giving us a global view of what we're looking at. And so these are some things that we talked about. The elementary schools that are at a population of 800 or 900, they expressed to me that they are struggling with one assigned permanent sub. And that's really, in my personal opinion, it has arisen out of issues we've had from COVID, and so we don't have a lot of substitutes. So our subs and our paras are being pulled to cover classrooms, and that's making it difficult to meet the needs of our, especially our ESC classrooms. And so there was an ask from those schools, our larger elementary schools, that have ESC population for an additional full-time sub that they could count on daily to fill those classroom needs. And so I just, I wanted to share that again. That's an ask from the schools that I particularly represent. And another point that I want, which I also shared with you when we were in person, you know, looking at research and moving students forward academically. Almost 100% support putting our efforts into K through 3 classrooms. So it is a priority for me, and I know that you shared with me, and I have seen, you know, this behavior tech that we're adding is one of our biggest concerns, and I shared that at one of our last meetings. We've got new discipline issues arising, especially in our elementary schools that we're trying to find some resolution for. So I understand that. But somewhere in the wish list, you know, I want to make sure that we're looking at addressing what our needs are, getting professionals in the primary grade so that we can catch students up and on grade level before they reach third grade, because history proves itself over and over and over again that if we do not get our children on grade level by third grade, the percentage of them becoming dropouts is very high. So that's just a concern I have coming from a primary elementary school. We've lost that, a lot of that since COVID. And so just something I'd like to place on the wish list down the road. And I think that's it. I think that's it for me.
Dr. James.
Thank you. Some things that I draw concern and awareness to, and I, I guess, before I start, I just want to understand the goal of today's work session is to come to consensus? Okay.
I believe so.
Yes, and it's going to be on the board agenda to be approved on February 14th.
Okay, thank you. So things that I want to draw awareness to. The first being, I want to speak to what Ms. Conrad just said, which is that I think we have two elementary schools specifically that need an ESC substitute. That would be Maplewood and Marion Oaks. They both have 10 or greater ESC units, self-contained. And from a budgetary perspective, my understanding is we, our, our non-instructional paraprofessionals, I'm sorry, our instructional paraprofessionals bargained that they essentially, and I'm going to misspeak this, because I'm not well-versed enough, but there's something regarding teacher pay when the teacher is absent and the para is sitting in the place doing the direct instruction. But then what is happening on campuses is that we have two paras in the room. You have the para professional who sits in the room, and then you have the para professional who was pulled from Peter to pay Paul, and then that para is wanting to get the teacher pay, but the other para also wants the teacher pay, because there's still a para professional in the room. And so principals are having to navigate those very turbulent waters. And I think one of the ways to potentially save our district's money would be to place a permanent ESC substitute on those two particular campuses that have that high ESC population so that we could navigate, at least mitigate a little bit that, that both paras are very righteous in wanting, if that pay is going to be there, that they're both righteous in having that. And so if we have an ESC substitute who could be the primary person to go into those roles when there is absenteeism, I think that that would be an appropriate thing.
Dr. James, what two schools were there?
Maplewood and, Maplewood and Marion Oaks.
Those both, those are both hub schools, correct?
Correct. So Maplewood has 20 self-contained units, I believe, and Marion Oaks has 10 currently. And, and so- And so, a significant amount of units, more than any other elementary school by far.
A significant amount.
What was the number at Spar?
Spar has two EBD units. Yes, Anthony has ASD. I think they have three ASD units. And so, we certainly have schools with multiple units. But if we were going to prioritize a need, I would say that those two would be my priority. I am going, and I'm surprised Ms. Conrad didn't say this, but I am going to be a fierce advocate for one kindergarten para for every kindergarten classroom.
That's what I was referring to.
Oh, okay. So I believe, and I honestly think our principals are willing to give up other things to get that. Based on the conversations I have had, they are willing to negotiate to get those kindergarten paras back. That is a need that is dire. And even when speaking with principals, they've said to me, when those cafeteria monitors sunset, potentially those kindergarten paras could be a support. But they have, would have to have those units to be able to use them in that, in that capacity. But, but we really need one kindergarten para for every kindergarten classroom. That is a need. The behavior tech, I appreciate adding in one based on student need. But I see a drastic discrepancy across our district. We have two behavior techs currently at Marion Oaks with 10 self-contained units. And we have two behavior techs at Spar Elementary with two special, self-contained units. I am not discrediting that Ms. Johnson needs her two to get the job done. But then that would speak to the fact that probably Ms. Dreer needs more than two to get the job done at her school. And so, I'm going to offer that this behavior tech should be a ratio. So one tech for every three units, or one tech for every four units, whatever that looks like. But I do believe that if two techs is necessary for two EBD units at Spar, then more than two is needed for the 10 units that Ms. Dreer has at Marion Oaks. As an example, there are of course other schools, but specifically that is one that comes to mind. I want to offer in PE, we stop at 866 students for two teachers and two PE techs. But prior to that, we're essentially saying that every 150 students or so needs another adult. And if every 150 students needs another adult for PE, then it shouldn't be 866 and beyond. Because based on our rezoning plans, we're looking at having elementary schools with 1,100-plus students. Ms. Dreer told me her, her projections for her school next year with the rezoning would be as close to 1,200 students. And to think that a school with 866 needs two PE techs and two teachers, and Ms. Dreer with 1,200 students needs that same number, from a scheduling perspective, is, is, I don't believe suffice. So I would offer that, that 866 should go to 999. And then we have a thousand and beyond, which adds a third human, either tech or teacher, to help facilitate that scheduling. I'm also going to offer that I think, once you go over that thousand-student threshold, if you speak to those principals that are on those sites, special area rotation is, is a delicate balancing act. And I think that for our elementary campuses that are over 1,000 students, they need a fourth special area rotation. I, I, I don't have an opinion as to whether that's drama, technology, a second art teacher, a second music teacher. But I think that there needs to be a fourth person over 1,000 students enrolled. Because from a scheduling perspective, it's, it's almost impossible to make it happen.
I would encourage that that should be a typing class since we're having to type.
Well, the problem is we've completely dismantled our computer labs on most of our campuses. So we would have to rebuild. I agree. I think that a typing, a typing would be amazing. We would, it would require, on only a few campuses, but it would require a restructuring of a computer lab. So that is something to consider. The last question I have speaks to what's already in place. Based on the way this is presented, there are elementary campuses that would lose an instructional support person. Because it is being paid out of the district budget currently. Are we of the agreement that schools will keep whatever they have until that position or that person is no longer at that school? And at that point, that position would sunset?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay. I was trying to be, I was, yes. I, I, I was, um, okay, I'll just use a school. Madison Street, Madison Street Academy is, is paying, is not paying for their CAS out of their Title I budget. They are an anomaly. So he currently has an instructional coach and a dean. That is considered two instructional support personnel. Based on this plan, he would only have one. Will he have one of those taken away? Or will he continue to have both until attrition occurs and one of those positions goes away?
So, I don't have a full answer to that. But I will say what we've done and have been doing this year and during this school term is if there's a position and the school year has started and now they're over those units, we have allowed them to just attrition out. So I do have an answer now that I'm talking through this. Yes, yes, they would.
Yes.
He would, and we would transfer, that would go through that involuntary transfer process for next year. But we wouldn't change that right now.
So, I gotta ask, so with that attrition, I thought in the past year's plan, the principal could say if he's still, he or she still need that position, and that position wouldn't attrition out, they could pull something else away that they were left.
So that feeds to that unit exchange process and then the note at the bottom. But just speaking, if no one asks for anything else based on those ratios.
Gotcha.
The, the, so to that point, I want to ask another question. And I know the answer has historically been no. So I'm asking us to, to maybe try and think outside the box as we work towards a site-based budgeting model in the future. If the principal of a school was going to lose a unit, like the example I just provided, and that principal says hypothetically, you know what? I can do without my classroom sub and I can do without my PE tech. Can I trade two non-instructional units to keep my instructional unit? Historically, that answer has been no. But I think that if, if we are entrusting our principals to be the instructional leaders on our campus, I would really like to understand why that is a hard no and why we can't afford that to our principals. Because if he is the, he or she is the principal of their campus, and they truly believe that they can go without that classroom sub and that PE tech, because there is so much value in having that content area specialist, I believe that we should be able to afford them that opportunity.
So definitely something we can look at through the unit exchange process and the unit exchange committee. But as of now, we, we are not allowing that, I guess, that cross category. So we've been allowing instruction for instructional position to be able to be exchanged. But I certainly understand the, the, the point that you're making. And I think that's something we can take back and, and discuss.
Dr. James, I don't want to cut you off there, but actually, my question does speak to that very question. And it comes to the assistant principal question, where we have at 1,200, we may substitute for instructional support. My question is, is this a person-for-person exchange or a dollar exchange? And that's, I think, speaking to her point. At what point do we say this area, this person, this whatever costs this much money, getting more to site-based budgeting? And for that, you actually can take two people of this other category and add or subtract one way or the other. And so, that was going to be my question, and I think that's a bit to your point. Where are we in that thought process?
So right now with this one, this is again proposed. So we've not done this yet, but it would be person per person. As far as trading two positions that may be 20,000 each a year for a position that's 40,000, we have not discussed that. But certainly something we can take and consider as we move forward. One thing that I've seen, and I agree with this, that we've sometimes had hesitation, is understanding that, you know, we have principals that sometimes change from year to year. So what one principal deems is necessary to move the school forward is maybe different from the principal that comes behind them. And like I think someone already mentioned, the needs of the school may change. It could be the same principal. So we are looking at ways to be more flexible. But then also being very conscientious about how we move forward and being more forward-thinking as well. Because once we change those, we can't, you know, the next principal may come in. If someone is in that position, we can't just say, oh, this principal does not want you here in this position, and just move them. So we're, we're trying to balance both. And we're working to do that and get us, you know, get it right. So everyone's happy with that.
And I'll just conclude with this. And Dr. James, and maybe even Dr. Gullett has something to weigh in on this specific conversation. I'm sorry that I did interrupt you, Dr. James. But at, at some point, and this is where, I'm going to be very crude in my language and say, this is where principals have the ability with Title I funds to play the game. So if we're potentially giving them an opportunity to have one of whatever this, at a very high salary level, they're going to let the district pay that all day long and use this smaller salary level for what they're wanting to do out of their Title I dollars. Because they know how to use their Title I dollars. We have afforded them the opportunity to do budgeting because it's a Title I. And they know how to use those dollars. I mean, it's not to the extent of what we do. But anyway, that's, it becomes game-playing if we're not actually putting dollar amounts to what these people are.
But it is complicated.
It is.
Because we have certain schools that don't have Title I dollars. So they don't, they are not allowed that flexibility.
The only two schools currently in the district without Title I are Osceola and Forest. Is that correct this year? That was what I had been told at the beginning of the year, the only two schools without Title I funding this year.
Correct, but there's going to be a change next year, which is what we're talking about.
Of, of course.
So, to finish, I have one more thing. Currently, enrollment numbers are not including pre-K students as enrolled students when we look at these ratios. We have sites with one unit, we have sites with three and four units. And that can include upwards of 50-plus students. So we have many principals who were, who just figured this out. So they're, they're about to cross that 850 threshold. And in their mind, because they have 850 little humans on their campus every day. And in their mind, they believe that they are about to approach the congratulations-you've been afforded moment. And then they realize that the district perceives them as having south of 800 students because all of those little four-year-olds and three-year-olds don't count. I want to offer, and I can appreciate Ms. Boston Ellis share with me that the funding sources are different. And those children do not carry as much funding as a traditional K5 student with regards to FTE. But those students use the library, those students use the cafeteria. Those students have a dean respond to their classroom or a behavior tech if it's appropriate. Those students are in a classroom with an instructional individual and para professional. So I believe wholeheartedly that pre-K students should be a part of the denominator when we're looking at these ratio numbers. And anything other than that is, is not representative of the needs of our principals and our leaders on their campuses. So that, I believe, concludes my comments and desires for what this would look like for elementary.
Just piggybacking on what Dr. James said is that I think that issue has compounded by the fact that we are seeing an influx in behavior, developmentally delayed, social issues in that particular area of student. You know, our, our pre-K and our kindergarten students are needing the most and more than they ever have before. So I think we're trying to look at this in a new perspective. And how can we, how can we help that group particularly move forward so that when they get into second and third grade, we have met their needs and they're prepared to be an active part of the classroom? Also, along that, some allocation things that are a struggle for me is the varied size in our elementary schools. And so, if I'm reading this correctly, when we go down and we look at secretary, IPC, guidance clerk, receptionist, it is one per school. And so, you know, we have elementary schools that have 425, 377, 393, 206, 170, 60, 390. But then on the other end of the spectrum, we're asking for these same people, who I believe get the same pay, they're managing 836 students, 932 students, 913 students, 952 students. And so, especially, again, it's been compounded by COVID and the amount of tracking and attendance issues and contacting parents and making those connections to get those kids in school. I do feel like we're comparing apples to oranges there. Having, you know, one secretary or one receptionist deal with signing in and dealing with 300 students, when really, some of them are doing double that every single day. So anyway, that's a concern that I have as far as how we're allocating and helping meet the needs. And really, it goes to the fact of not just servicing our students and families, but keeping our staff. These individuals who are in, you know, one position, serving the school, and some of them are even answering the door because their buzzers aren't installed yet. So, you know, you add that to it. They're just exhausted, and they're doing the job of three people. And so, I'm just concerned in how can we keep the people that we have? And how can we support our students and families and our staff?
Ms. Thorpe?
Thank you. Robust conversation already, not a surprise. All right. Getting back to the beginning of the comments, when it comes to self-contained settings and the need for an ESE para, I wholeheartedly agree. I would remind everyone that there isn't a classroom at Hillcrest School that isn't ESE. And I have seen the struggle of not having a dedicated sub that really knows that particular and specialized population of students on campus every day. To bring in a sub from the outside is unfair to everybody. It takes a specialized skill set. So I would like for Hillcrest to be included in that consideration for sure. It's too bad that the system is set up that we almost have to fail to be able to try to succeed. And what I mean by that is, is that when a school deteriorates, money flows in. That's not district funds to try to make things better. And I have hope because at the state level, pre-K is really being promoted. That that is an area of need and, and that we know that if we wait too long to intervene, it's just not right, it's also very expensive. You know, all this remediation and everything else. The older kids get, the more difficult it becomes. So I would like to be hopeful that in the spirit of the workforce development that's getting a lot of support, that pre-K right along with that. Because that disparity in funding is a problem. You know, we are busily promoting, "Pre-K is really important, get your kid here." But, but the money isn't supporting it. And then those kids flow up to kindergarten. And, you know, we had the one-to-one for each kindergarten classroom before COVID. And, and then we started to attrition them out. And I understand because of the expense, you know, I, I get that. We're in a new day. Because of where we are employment-wise and all of the open positions, we've, we know that, we've talked about this a lot, that paras are actually teaching, they're functioning as teachers. And we had this in our, in our conversation, you know, Ms. Moran, is that the reality of it is, is that if that one para for every two classrooms is out that day for any reason, then now you've got two classrooms that are being affected. So I really do get that money doesn't grow on trees. And that if, and that we have to be so creative and strategic in how we're directing our, our support. And, and we all say, I'm going to include pre-K in this now. Pre-K through three is, that is, those are the years that are going to set the stage for the rest of anyone's life, by and large. So I, I hope that we can find a way, or at least begin to rethink, that attritioning out of the kindergarten paras, one for each classroom. Because the playing field has definitely changed over the past few years. And until our employment crunch is over, and that has been attained, that goal has been attained, each week that goes by without them, I think we're just kind of sh- each week that goes by without them, I think we're just kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. I'll say that I continue to love the blue note at the bottom that says, "Units may be added or removed based on student needs, program changes, and our enrollment changes." And I hope there are multiple ways to communicate that down to the schools so that they actually really believe that they are, their request, while it may not always be honored, and they're going to have to supply data, you know, some people want what they want because they want it, and I'm not saying it's unnecessary, unrealistic, but sometimes there's reasons why it can't be granted. But people have to know at the school level that other schools have asked for things and have gotten them, for them to believe that that blue note is even true. And that's part of the, trying to grow the trust and the communication and collaboration that is so needed to continue to happen in this district. So some people say they don't envy our positions, but I will say that in a lot of ways, I don't envy yours. Because what we're trying to do is, is cover so many bases with too few dollar signs. And, and your advocacy, Dr. Gullett, has been incredible with superintendents to really help the Chancellor of Education understand, you know, we don't want all that money on the backside, we don't want these schools to slide into DNF status, ever. So let's start funding them from the front side. That's all I have.
Dr. Gullett, you're leaning forward.
You really read me well, don't you? Thank you, Madam Chair, members of board. I just, before we leave elementary, I think it's important to reiterate, and I'm not saying anything that my team hasn't heard, and I think most of you have heard from me. I was a site-based administrator for 12 years in elementary, nine as a principal. Two very different schools, one Title I, one very affluent school, very different populations that we supported, very large schools. And there's no stronger advocate for site-based leadership and decision-making than me. We are working diligently. The team knows that I nudge pretty hard to get to the site-based budgeting model because that's all I've ever known. And I know what that looks like, I've made decisions over the years that were different from year to year, depending on the needs of the students, depending on our data, depending on my staff, and what those needs were. So we're working diligently to get there, and this is a process, this is a huge process for every, all the reasons that you've already shared. And I'm going to take everyone back to almost three years ago now with trying to create a process that would provide some equity and voice to, to getting there. The exchange, all of that was, was intended to get us to more of a site base. We're not there yet, so I'm not going to pretend that we are, but diligently working on that. And some of those parameters that were referenced about changing out units, I did those very things. I said, I don't, I don't need this, but I need this. My math data, I need a math coach this year. I need, I didn't have an AP so I could have more teachers. I, I had the ability to do that, but we had to have some parameters around that from a district level, and we will need to do that. And so until we can get to a place where the schools have that data in front of them and can see the impact, we have the financial piece, those things need to be in place. Because at the end of the day, the district, we have the big picture, right, of the cost associated with that. And so I fully trust our school teams to make those decisions, and I want them to make those decisions. We're just working on the mechanics, if you will, to allow all of that to happen. This is trying to move us in that direction. I think you've made some really great notes as well on this, on elementary. And it didn't strike me until you said it, the preschool numbers, I think we do need to include, I used to see in budgets, preschool and the other numbers side by side, even though I meant, I knew they meant different things, they were also important pieces as we look at the big picture. The ESE I want to speak to just briefly because I had this conversation just the other day about looking at ways we can use those IDEA funds. We need to match the, the level of need of student need in ESE with the support. And so without going into a lot of details, I think you all know what that is, when we look at 254s and 255s and the matrix. When we say units, I just want to say, it's not just the units, but the student need within those units. And so, again, no stronger advocate than me in trying to get us to ratios and numbers that match resources with, with the needs of our students. And so please bear with us. Thank you for your flexibility and understanding, and I, I can sense, Ms. Bostonell, this is always, there's only so much money, and we do need to be mindful because we've referenced some things here also that come from different pots, from referendum, and I've mentioned IDEA, but Title I funds, S or dollars, there's a lot of federal pieces moving here. And so it's, again, another interesting and complex puzzle, but, but we're working hard to try to get to those site-based models.
And I want to ask one question, then we need to get on to the middle school. But the, the question that I have because of some points that fellow board members have made, when we come to the ratios of one secretary, one receptionist, one guidance clerk, one registrar, et cetera, per school, is that something that is just our written rule, or is it something we've actually bargained with the union that represents those folks? And my question is, is this. Because as Ms. Conrad pointed out, and I also pulled up myself, some of our ratios in some of our schools where we have 350 students in an elementary school, and then another elementary school has more than 1,000 students. If those are not things that we have bargained, is there the potential or opportunity to do combo positions that if you have a school at a certain number of students, that you actually have a receptionist who's also your secretary, or you have a registrar that's also doing? I don't know the answer to that, I'm just curious if that's, how that's worked out.
So we have not discussed, and it has not been brought up as an idea to do or even explore the idea of combo positions and what that would look like. I think we had one elementary that mentioned wanting to do enrollment-based clerical positions, so being able to add an additional secretary, you know, based on enrollment. But that wasn't where we landed when we were looking at priorities, but we can certainly take that back, and we can also explore the idea of, you know, combo positions. But it has not been explored as of today.
We did, we did talk about that a little bit in, in my meeting with you, Ms. Moran, that, you know, when our, our smaller schools are going the other way with our larger schools, if there could almost be a job-sharing position between two schools, you know, for, for some of these with, I lost my list, you know, with the guidance clerk or the IPC, you know, that they could provide some relief for that group if we can't afford to fully fund our larger elementary schools with an extra person.
It would, it would fall, I learned this, it would fall under clerk-generalist, which is what Ms. Moran taught me. So it would be adding an additional clerk-generalist to the staffing plan for schools over a certain number, 800, 900, whatever we deemed, and adding that clerk-generalist so that the principal would then have the discretion to place that generalist in a position they felt was most necessary, whether that is an additional receptionist or guidance clerk or whatever. But I, I learned that when we do the clerk-generalist, that provides the most flexibility to the site-based leadership.
I want to say you all, I think we're all saying three different things, but, but yes, so I think Ms. Campbell was talking about having a position that can be, you know, half bookkeeper, half receptionist. I know Ms. Conrad is mentioning, you know, one clerk-generalist, but they service Harborview and Hammett Bowen. And then thinking, what Ms., what Dr. James is mentioning is adding that clerk-generalist position that they can be a free-for-all based on enrollment. So I hear what you were saying, we're getting to the same thing, but I just want to, I think we're going different paths but getting the same way.
I'm sure. With that combo, I hear the combo thing, but I also see, not to be the negative Nancy, sorry. But, negative Nelly, I was looking for another n-word, end name. When I hear about this, this combo thing, I, I see a lot of issues with that as far as payroll, as far as where they will fall at on schedules, as far as pay. Because if you're telling me I'm going to work half a day as one position and that pay is much lower than the other, and then the other half a day, then I'm going to say, I'm working all day at the higher level. And so I, I see that. So when you, when I heard Ms. Dr. James and talk about the generals, that's kind of like a person that's like a floater. Am I, am I saying it correct, Dr. Gullett?
That's, that's correct. And if I may add on to Reverend Cummings, not directly on your page, but relatedly, and I know, board members, you may recall some of these conversations, we have a lot of adjustments to make in our staffing plans in general in our district. So when we, when I hear about clerks, that was one of the items that came up of budget review cycles. We have lots of different types of clerks, the different pay grades, and we have a lot of work to do with all of our positions. Again, that's, when I talk about the big picture, it sounds very simple. I would love it to be simple, believe me. I want to get there, and I'm yet a little impatient when I can't get there sooner. But we have a lot of other things that have happened over the years in our district that we have to clean up. And we have to provide clarity in role, responsibility, job descriptions before we start adding positions. These are all happening simultaneously. And as I've mentioned before, we've need a salary review, we need, we have some work to do. We have some work to do.
Thank you. I, I, we do need to go on to middle school. The, the point I was trying to make to wrap that elementary school conversation up was, when we get to school-based budgeting, when we get there, understanding that having four different people on a campus that are doing clerical-type jobs is not going to be real-world for a school with 350 students. It's just not. And, and so that's where I'm asking now, if we're able to start thinking that way in how we're putting these together and saying, if you have less than 500 students, then you get one person who does both of these jobs. And there are different salary ranges, and I get all that, but that was, my original question was, are these ratios, are these bargained, that our union actually knows that each school gets one of this, one of that? And that was my overall question. If the answer to that is no, then we're closer, at least to bridge that conversation. If the answer is yes, we've got other issues we'll have to deal with. But that's, that was my question. Do we know if that's something that is bargained currently that?
And I don't think it would be bargained, just, but not having the contract in front of me, because our ratios, we're not bargaining our, our ratios.
Okay. And that answers that question. And Dr. Gullett?
Yes, and I think to your point on that, it's, it's looking at them as a ratio, the ratios for each of those. And I think that is the next step. I think that needs to occur with these other positions as well. Yes.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and move on to middle school? Because again, we have 40 minutes.
We didn't speak, did you, we, you presented ESE, but we did not make comment on ESE.
Right, because there weren't any changes? Are you?
I have a, but, but, but yes, but yes, I do. So there's a, there's something in the yellow at the bottom, which I assumed was a change because everything else in yellow is a change. So if it's not a change, then I apologize for assuming it was a change, but.
It's not a change.
So then I'm going to propose that there needs to be a change. After I spoke with principals who have self-contained units on their campuses, the 50% number is too big. To, to assume that I have to have 13 and a half EBD students in my self-contained EBD classroom before I get another adult in there is, is not functional and it is not working. When I spoke to principals with self-contained units, they, they feel more comfortable with the 25 to 30% number. And we have schools that have requested from ESE that additional human already, that additional adult, and they're sitting with enrollment at 25 or 30%. So they're sitting in with classrooms at 12, 11 or 12 students, and cried out to ESE and said, "I need this, I need this," and ESE gave them that position. So I think that that 50% number needs to change to be more reflective of what the needs are in our classroom. Because I, I don't even think it's safe to have 14 EBD students in one classroom. I was at Sparr Elementary yesterday, and there's a window missing because a student made a very poor choice. And that's with nine students in the classroom. So with 14 students in that classroom before another adult gets added, I would argue is not safe. So I would like to see that 50% number changed to be more reflective of the needs in the classrooms. So that was the comment I had, and I apologize for assuming that that was in yellow, so it was a change.
Dr. Gullett's texting, so she's probably getting information for us.
I'm, yes, thank you. I'm, I'm going to go back to the ESE conversation and your questions, and I need, I think we will need to take that back to the ESE team with regard to those dollars. Because again, I'm seeing that we need to match the dollars with the needs. So I appreciate that feedback. I'm, I'm looking and processing as well and trying to find out.
Just quickly, if you hadn't brought it up, that was going to be my question. You know, students have a matrix for a reason, and when they have very volatile behaviors or very high needs, medically fragile, it is not safe. It just isn't safe. So I'll just leave that right there.
I do, I do want to make a comment, and I could be incorrect in this, so please correct me, Dr. Gullett, if this is wrong. It's been kind of a tricky transitional period in ESE just because we lost a lot of VE units, is that correct? In the last little bit? And so trying to find the least restrictive environment for these students and collecting data on them to get their correct placement has been a very tricky process for our administrators. And so I just wanted to share that I feel that's why we're seeing the high numbers in some of these classes that we were not, we're not really prepared for because we don't have a place for them. It's either the general ed, or, you know, there's not a lot of middle ground. So you have kids that need a lot of assistance, maybe academically, but they don't have the severe behavior portion. And so I just wanted to share that out in case people that are not in educational lingo, that they would understand that's why we're, we're experiencing some struggle in this area.
Yes, and while inclusion done well is a beautiful thing to witness.
Absolutely.
Inclusion not done well is an absolute disaster. And, and this district has been literally fined in the past for, for over-identifying in, in ESE, you know? And that speaks to a much longer conversation that we don't have time to have today. But, you know, the, the spectrum of services, you know, need drives placement, need drives placement. So what I feel like I'm hearing from a lot of my other board members is, it's important to us for that to be kept in, in mind. That's how we're going to keep really good teachers, and that's how we're going to grow young idealistic teachers, or maybe people that aren't as young that want to come into education and, and help us. We, we have to set them up for success, and 13 EBD kids and not enough help is not doing that.
I think what we're doing, if, if we leave it like it is, we're, we're creating, I hate to say it this way, but I'm going to say it this way, we're actually creating a war zone for our teachers to go into every day instead of.
Literally, we're losing staff over it also.
So who wants to go, who wants to go to a war zone every day? Eventually, you, you get worn out, get burned out, so.
Ms. Moran, middle school.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moran.
No, 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 no.
I appreciate it.
We ask questions, but we do learn, as evidenced by.
Yes, and I will, we'll circle back at the end to ensure I've captured it all. Okay, so middle school, an additional line similar to what we did with elementary, adding the flexibility or the ability to add an additional assistant principal at 1,500 enrollment, but they also made sub that for instructional support. Same thing with the instructional support line, making that a little clearer, and then also adding a bookkeeper for enrollments of 1,300 or more. So those were the two proposed changes for middle school.
I'll, I'll start. Ms. Moran, I want to start with a thank you, because after you met with me, I called you just a couple hours later because of my, one of my district two schools had reached out to me, he was a little late getting back to me. But that was a, a very big point of contention for our middle schools that are really functioning almost as high schools with the amount of money between clubs and sports and everything coming in every day that their secretary is trying to deal with. So anyway, I wanted to thank you because that was really almost an immediate answer that you had for me, that schools that are at that level will now have a secretary and a bookkeeper, and I think, believe that will. and a bookkeeper. And I think, believe that will affect Liberty Middle and Bellevue Middle.
Based on the projections now, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
I can go.
Go ahead.
Brief comments I'm going to make, and I've spoken with most of the principals that this affects, but I believe wholeheartedly that if we set ratios in elementary, those same ratios should apply for middle and high school. What that means is that in instructional support in elementary, 1,000 to 1,499 gets two instructional support units. But in middle school, we've changed that to 1,249 instead of 1,499. I think we need to be consistent. It either is that 1,299 is the number or 1,499 is the number. But to assume that somehow the needs are so drastically different in elementary versus middle school, I don't think is appropriate. I think that there are behavior needs in middle school that are different than behavior needs in elementary. They look different. The offenses are different. And I think that's why we continue to have this note at the bottom, which says, if there are additional needs, we can request for those additional units. This is a base unit allocation. And so because we're looking at this as a base unit allocation, I think that that base unit allocation should be consistent across the board, which then would offer instructional support being 1,000 to 1,499 would receive two units, and 1,500 plus would receive three units for instructional support. Again, if that middle school has data to support that they need an additional unit for a dean, then that is the data that they support and they present, and then they get that unit granted to them. But I don't think off the cuff we should assume that that's necessary. I would argue that same thing for school counselors. If we look at elementary, 1 to 799 gets one, 800 to 1199 gets two, and then 1,200 plus gets three. If that is the case for elementary, who services seventh grades, pre-K through fifth grade? Then I would argue that that is, again, probably feasible for middle school. Uncomfortable? Absolutely. But feasible. And so I would offer that those ratios should be there. And finally, the most uncomfortable is that, and I'm going to preface this by saying, I don't necessarily want to take away assistant principals from middle schools next year, but I want to be, draw awareness to a point Ms. Campbell's already made, which is if the funding is going to be there, there will have to be appropriate changes made. If a, if a middle school has south of 800 students, they should have one AP because that is what a middle, what an elementary school has. And an elementary school has lower student ratios, which means that elementary school presumably has more teacher instructional units, if not the same amount. And so again, you know, and I've spoken to Mr. McAtier and Mr. Johnson, who would be the middle schools that would be affected by what I'm saying right now. But I want to offer that I do think this district needs to go forward to 1 to 849 gets an APC in middle school, 850 to 1199 would get an APD, and then 1,200 plus would get an API. I, I don't think that that number should be 1,500 plus for that third AP. What I know is that Bellevue High School functioned with three APs with 1,600 students. And, and there were smaller high schools, that there are currently smaller high schools functioning with three APs that are below this 1,500 number. So Dr. Gary with 1,600 and change students deserves three APs, and he deserved that. And honestly, I was going to say her maiden name now, so Melissa Forsyth, but not Forsyth.
Connor.
Thank you. Deserves three APs. And so this 1,500 number, I believe, should be 1,200. Because that is what we're saying an elementary school needs, an elementary school gets three. So then that same number, it should be reciprocal.
If you put the number at 1,200, it goes to Lake Weir Middle also, by the way.
Sure. Whatever, yeah. Yep, wherever, I mean, I truly believe that, and, and so you see that there's a, there's a flip-flop, right? So it's not just like we're adding to elementary or adding to middle, but I believe that we need to have an even ground across the district. If this is the ratio, and if we're student drive, if our student enrollment is driving our unit allocation in one area of schools, it should drive in all areas of our schools. There should not be just some arbitrary difference. And again, if the data supports that they need additional units, those principals should be granted that opportunity to submit those forms to request those additional units. But that basic unit allocation, which is what we're discussing, should be consistent. And that concludes my remarks.
Dr. Gullett, you're leaning forward. Do you want to speak to that specifically?
I just want to draw attention to, perhaps Ms. Moran, we could include this for future too, to the notion of the need. We also have intervention AP as an additional position in our district that we didn't used to have to, for example, Lake Weir. So I think perhaps it might be helpful if we can include that in these ratios so that it could be identified as something that we're doing to provide support where needed.
Right. And, and thank you, Chair. That, again, that illustrates my previous point, that you have to be in bad shape to get more help. And I think our goal is to never get into bad shape.
Correct. Dr. James makes a very solid point that I completely concur with. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but this arbitrary number that has come based on, it's uncomfortable. It will be uncomfortable potentially for schools that would be directly impacted. But why we have different ratios at each level, frankly, students are students. And I know that they're all varying and different, and that's why we have certain specialties and certain funding sources that fund different things and this, that, and the other. But when we're talking about specifically administrative personnel, and as we just talked about, the dollar follows a student. And we're here because students, and we're talking about essentially positions that are funded by dollars because students have dollar signs attached to them, which is not a comfortable position. We're certainly here for student outcomes, but we're here also to talk about budget, and that's ultimately what drives this. That's why Ms. Boston Ellis walked out. She, she, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that she did that entirely because the conversation was getting uncomfortable, but Ms. Boston Ellis, we love you, and I know you're listening back in your office. And I know you're working because you've been in here with us all morning. But I, I think Dr. James makes a very solid point that whatever those numbers are, and if we're comfortable with where the numbers are at elementary school level, then we should reciprocate at the other levels those same ratios and not just base it on, well, we know that that school has the most students, or 1,200 used to be this number that was, and it only impacted one or two schools. Well, it may start impacting more than two or three schools. I mean, as we continue to grow and don't have places to put our students, we may start seeing more schools at that level and potentially more schools in certain areas that are in the lower side of that that potentially don't need to have. And when those principals have the ability to use their dollars on their campus, they probably will be taking that into consideration, understanding they can't afford three APs. They, they just can't.
Or they may choose to afford.
Or they may choose to.
And not have something else.
Absolutely. So we're not there yet, but I think you can hear this board. We're, we're prepared to get there. And I think that we have to continue to take steps to get our principals and our district leaders thinking that way so that when we do have those systems in place, it's not going to be a shock to the system that they already understand how those dollars add up and work and ratios matter. Anything else on middle school? High school it is.
Okay, moving to high school, thank you. So with the high school, there is already an allocation for an API at 2,700 enrollment, but we just added the note to match middle and elementary that that position may be subbed out for instructional support. Again, cleaning up that sub-support, that instructional support language, and then adding a clerk-generalist position for enrollment of 2,000 or more.
Board?
I can go first.
Dr. James?
So there's again discrepancy here. So when we look at instructional support, we now see that same numbering that we saw at elementary for instructional support. And so I just want to draw awareness to the fact that what we see at high school should be copied back to middle school. Assistant principal. Forest High School needs four APs, and Westport High School needs five. So I want to offer again that same ratio. 1 to 849 gets an APC. 850 to 1199 gets an APD. 1,200 to 2,200 gets an API. 2,200 to 2,699 gets an API. And 2,700 plus gets an API. We have schools that if they were in any other county, they would have way more support. And we are blessed to have principals that are managing the madness beautifully, but they need more support. So I want to offer a restructuring, reconstruction to those ratios at the, for the assistant principals at high school. Want to draw one, well, I guess I got a few. School counselor. I think we have determined, based on 1 to 199, that it is, every 500 students needs another counselor. I don't know why somehow that mysteriously stops being important when we hit 2,000 students. So 2,000 to 2,499 should be a fifth, and 2,500 plus should be a sixth, if that's what we have decided. I think that the attendance clerk position should be a ratio-based position at high school. I don't think that it should be one per school. So I think something like one for every 2,000 students and over 2,000 students, there's a second one. I think it's crazy to think that, you know, North Marion High School's attendance clerk and Westport High School's attendance clerk should do the same job. I am pleased with the clerk-generalist position here, and I can understand and make the concession that we're adding this clerk-generalist so that that principal could decide to use them as attendance clerk. But I would offer that there is, Westport could probably use three attendance clerks, if we're being honest. And so I think that probably a ratio-driven attendance clerk in addition to the addition of a clerk-generalist is appropriate. And the last question I got asked was, how is PE allocated in secondary? Because I see class size 1 to 25, and I see electives listed. Well, it's 1 to 22 in middle school and 1 to 25 in high school. But how do we decide how many PE coaches a secondary school gets? Because I don't see that on here, and it's been brought to my attention by secondary principals.
I, I can follow up, and so I can give you a precise and exact answer.
Okay. Because we, it's just very clear in elementary. And then it's, it's as, and I know from experience, oh, boy, do we put a lot of children in the gym in secondary. And I know we do in elementary anyways, but they have, they, they may have techs and other things. And so, and it's very outlined, that ratio in elementary. But then in secondary, you know, we had 1,600 students when I was at Bellevue High School, and we had two PE teachers. And the math ain't math in there for me when I look at like...
That PE is a graduation requirement.
Well, yes. And also, like, I look at the ratios from elementary, and yes, controlling small children is a different experience than controlling larger children. But I just am confused where that ratio is for PE at secondary level. And so that's something that I would at least like to understand and figure out. I, I think that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings?
Listening to Dr. James brought some very valuable, very, very valuable points. I was looking at, she was focused on several. I kind of focused in on, on the school counselors. Coming from a caseload area in my career, some of these cases, these caseloads for these schools' counselors are astronomical. When you look at an elementary, basically, they have the potential to have 800 students on their caseload on the first tier. Then you drop to element, to middle school, on the first tier, one counselor could have 600 on their caseload. And then from high school, first tier, one has 500 on their caseload. If you've ever done caseload-type work, those numbers are astronomically high. Astronomically high. And you can't effectively, and I understand the needs are different. You're not going to be seeing each one of these kids every day. I understand that. But when, when it all breaks loose, you're going to have a huge, huge, huge influx of things coming. And I can't adequately see a person, one person, doing all those things. I think those numbers probably do need to be adjusted as Dr. James was just talking about on, on that. I know we're working with allocation. I know we're looking at trying to be good stewards. But when I look at these, these numbers are high. Very high.
Reverend Cummings, when you talk about all of the need that has arisen out of COVID and our kids coming back from COVID, and, and this is not a pretty or a fun statement, but our guidance counselors have to do so much paperwork. So they are really limited on top of, even if they didn't have that task, getting to see and, and check in with 600 students. And then their PMP meetings and their testing. And, you know, and getting them staffed into programs and all of those things. I, I was kind of surprised because there's been so much discussion about the importance of mental health. And, and I think we have great guidance counselors. This is not, this is not a pick or a poke at them. They're doing the best that they can. But they're having to wear so many hats, you know, right now. So it is a very big job. I would concur.
And the other thing that I also was looking at, we were talking about the attendance, what was it, attendance, what are they called, attendance clerk? And I just heard us a few meetings ago talk about what the attendance specialists are. That's the same classification, something completely different, correct?
Completely different. The attendance specialists were formerly the social work assistants.
Okay. Exactly. They're only, so those are not going to be school-based?
Right. They share schools.
They're shared schools. Okay.
Yeah. And that's, I find that confusing as well. The terminology is very similar.
Yeah.
Thank you, Board. The, the one area that I want, we, we just continue to add, we have added a lot of, of people.
I don't agree.
Potentially. I mean, and so I know that you've taken a ton of notes, and you'll go back and watch this and hear all the things. The one, one position that I want to draw attention to specifically at this high school level is the health clinic assistant. Gone, gone are the days that every school has a school nurse. So let's start there. Gone are those days. But the fact that you might have someone that is your health clinic person of sorts, one person on a high school campus with 2,700-plus students, I, that, that feels off to me. Just speaking from the healthcare perspective, I would, we, we often get alerts that there's been a medical emergency, whatever it might be, you know, certainly. Call 911, absolutely, whenever there are emergency issues. But if, if we, if we had more assistance in that healthcare realm, thank you, Vice Chair, if we had more, more something, I'm not even saying it needs to be a healthcare or health clinic assistant. Maybe there's a different title, but someone else with a medical background on campus would be really helpful. We, we've had conversation very recently about the AEDs and how all the people are going to need to be trained. Terrific. But if we actually had personnel that were really healthcare-trained, more than just one per 2,700 students, I mean, that, that's the one that, that I'm drawn to. Certainly, some of these other things that we've talked about are funded different ways and come out of different, and they're shared. And the, as we just said, the social workers and the social work assistants that are now attendance assistants and, or whatever they're called, attendance specialists, whatever the new title is. So I mean, some of those things I can, I can see and understand. I appreciate the conversation about the PE because I concur, when I think of PE at the elementary school level, I'm thinking, well, it's the law that we have to have PE. I mean, that's statute that we have to have PE in our elementary schools, and, you know, that's something we have to do. Yeah, well, FDOE actually makes sure that PE is a graduation requirement. And so those ratios don't really add up either whenever you're thinking of 2,700 students. How many PE teachers is that really over a four-year time span to... So I, I know there are creative ways that students take that hope and all that online to fulfill other requirements. But when you think of graduation requirements, how are we actually helping students get to those requirements apart from putting them a room with 50-plus other students potentially? And I'm not saying that's what it looks like. I haven't been there. But based on ratios, it seems like that's probably what is happening, even at the middle school level. But that, it's not a graduation requirement at middle school. So anyway, those are my thoughts. And maybe we aren't adding a ton of positions, but it seems like what I'm hearing from the board collectively, and correct me if I'm wrong, Board, is that we would like to see more consistency in how these numbers are determined. And if we're setting a five, a 1 to 500 ratio as our drop point for something else to happen, then let's make that consistent. And if we're setting a five, a one to five hundred ratio as our drop point for something else to happen, then let's make that consistent. And not all of a sudden change the game because of the number of students we might have in the district in a certain school at a certain time. We might be thinking, we can only afford three at that because we have three schools that actually meet that. So let's change that number so we can make that work. And while that works for district-based budgeting, it's not going to work for site-based budgeting when we get there. And so the closer we can get to what that site-based budget looks like, starting this year, I think is going to be helpful for us down the road. Board, do you concur, is that, am I speaking out of turn on that, we think we're?
Yeah, I I don't think we've come to consensus as to.
That's what I was gonna ask, thank you.
I don't think we've did that at all.
I mean, I I I know that we're gonna have this come before us in a month from now. Is there a way we can see it again, Dr. Gullett, based on?
Certainly, and I I think at this point, thank you, Madam Chair, that would be advisable. Uh because what I'm hearing is the board is ready to create some additional ratios. And I was just going to confirm with Ms. Marant, who's spent incredible amount of time on this, that will impact some of our schools. And not always adding, but some will have a reduction, so I just want to be really clear about that, that the board's okay with that. Because we have had that conversation, we have very large schools and we have very, we have smaller schools. And the the need, it isn't just just about student enrollment, it's about the needs of students as well. That's another important piece to reiterate, but as long as the board's comfortable, we'll bring back a different proposal.
I wanted to add one other thing regarding the E S E. When we have a student who enrolls, who carries an I A P with a heavier weight and requires a a a one-on-one para a hundred and twenty minutes a day. That then um is supposed to come from a separate pot of money and the district hires that position. Now, oftentimes, we're struggling to hire that position. My experience and 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 in conversation with principals, I know that that position follows the student. And that is a district-funded position. I want to offer that when that position is posted, the school in which that individual would work, while where that child is enrolled currently. Should be added to the posting because people work for people. And if I live in Dunellen and I see an E S C para professional job posted. I may apply for it and then find out it's in Fort McCoy and I say, oh, no, I won't go. But I may be a retired para who lives in Fort McCoy and sees it posted and I would say, oh, well, you know what, I'm actually thinking about going back to work. So I want to offer and I and I, there'll have to be some asterisk that says this money follows the kid and if the kid goes somewhere else. Then that's how this will go, but I do believe we would see higher turnout of our job postings for that if it was attached to a school site. Because we have incredible leaders that people want to work for.
I I agree with that.
Well, taken, yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair. I just want to be sure that I'm clear on the ask of the board so I can bring back um the information that you all desire. When we're looking at the ratios and I know we we've discussed um having it to be the same across elementary, middle and high. So as we've discussed, some of those fluctuate. Are we leaning towards the ratios that would produce um more staff? Or like, I just want to know which ratios you want to, want me to follow or adopt to go across the board? If I'm asking that clearly.
Can I say for me?
It's variable.
Yeah, it's variable, for me, um Ms. Marant, when I look at the caseload ones such as the counselors. I I think of a workable caseload. Um what's, what can a person reasonably do within a month's time on a workable caseload? I've had caseloads, six hundred and fifty, but my, but it was a specialized caseload, meaning everybody couldn't get on there to a certain time. So when I look at a school counselor, I don't know how they distribute students to those caseloads. So I, I just me, I'm thinking if if I'm in a school with eight hundred kids, there's no way possible. I'm going to effectively be a good case manager for eight hundred kids. And because I see that as one to, I think it was one to seven ninety-nine. I I just can't see how that.
It's one to nine, oh, sorry.
Looking at elementary.
Elementary, yeah, elementaries, I just can't see how that's going to be. I I would think, and and I understand the needs are different, but elementary, I think, needs get a little bit more tougher as they move forward. But right now, coming out of COVID, what we're dealing with, we're seeing a lot of baker acts, we're seeing a lot of different behaviors coming forth. I just can't s- I, I'm thinking that's just too large.
Go ahead, Ms. Thoreau.
Go ahead, Ms. Thoreau.
Thank you, um we also want to remember the network of support that is provided to schools through our social workers, through our psychologists. Through our newly renamed a- attendance specialists, you know, at its finest. There are webs of support that are provided depending on the level of intensity, you know, of the student. And I would say that in elementary, um kids come in, hopefully this will be fixed sooner than later with uh pre-K. And identifying them younger when they really have significant needs. Because you know, when a, when a kid that just is fresh out of the wherever lands in a kindergarten class. It it can be really tough if the support isn't there. So uh my point is, is that even at the school level, they're not always being asked to shoulder the whole load by themselves, you know. That's where the underground Disney becomes activated, so let's let's keep that in mind, too. I do not disagree, and there's research all over it and and practice, any of us that have experienced it have have seen it. You know, guidance counselors have been overburdened forever. People in the community say, why do we need all these positions in schools anymore? Well, you used to be able to take junior by the ear when they weren't behaving and, you know, just handle it as as a teacher. Uh that the 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 complexity and the paperwork and the follow-up, if any of you have ever filled out a bullying packet, you know exactly what I'm talking about, you know? You may not have violent behaviors on your campus, but but if there is an accusation of bullying, that's supposed to be taken very seriously and followed up very quickly. And that is a complex process, I I mean, obviously, it needs to be done thoughtfully and time needs to be spent to it. Again, i- it's time, that's, that is the biggest difference between before, in the past and now. Of of why we need more people. Because the task and the associated paperwork is exponentially more complicated. Educationally, legally, uh ethically, all of that.
Dr. James.
I was just, I I think it's it's transferable, so there's going to be additions and subtractions. What I'm suggesting is we start with one. So if we're starting with one unit allocation in elementary, we start with one unit allocation based on that ratio in middle and in high. Because the assumption that a secondary school just gets a certain amount because they have our secondary school, I think we should step away from. So to that regard, you would see one next to counselors for one to whatever that number we d- you decide on. And if that number's five hundred, that number's five hundred. But I think that in, that what I'm asking is that we see that across all levels.
I a hundred percent agree.
And then in the same regard, with assistant principals, basic allocation of two. But if we have a number tied to it, then that number should be representative across all three. And so it's not, is there adding or subtracting, I think that it's just a transitionary of units across all all three levels.
And and then I think what I'm understanding is, and then the blue would kick in about if you need something different. Than you asked, but but a, but a different and consistent framework to start with.
Because this is the basic unit allocation and so that should be consistent and then if there's additional needs, we go there.
So what I'm hearing, Ms. Marant, I don't know that we're necessarily giving you that number. I think that we kind of want, based on the feedback that you've heard today, what those numbers might be. And and I I appreciate the thought on the assistant principals in particular, because if we're thinking one assistant principal for one to nearly eight hundred fifty students. And then it kicks in the second one at eight hundred fifty students, that's gonna, if that's the number. I mean, so that's what we're using for elementary, I'm just using that as an example, if that's the number. And so that's what, because you've already done such a wonderful job of creating what you've done here, we're already much further than we were a couple of years ago. Because these whole ratios were new to everyone a couple of years ago, so now that we're doing ratios, let's make them consistent. Let's get more um just where everybody understands and it's not, to Dr. James' point, just because you're at a secondary, you get this. Let's make it consistent, again, the dollar follows the student, there are additional dollars potentially, depending on what that student is doing. If they're in C T E and you know, there's additional dollars there certainly associated, but for the most part, we have a base student allocation. We have a B S A, and so we need to start considering what that looks like.
And I appreciate that, so we'll certainly bring the team back together. Um and then we will um review everything, I've taken great notes and we'll present something. I will ask, and I don't know if Dr. Gullett or someone will speak on this, are we able to bring this before you in a setting like this? Prior to it going to the board for approval, because we want to try as best as we can to get it on that February fourteenth board agenda. Because it, these numbers play into everything that goes after that.
So Dr. Gullett, um looking ahead for future agendas, uh do we have space in the, I mean, we're gonna have to create it. But in our February second work session. I have, I was gonna pull up the.
I'm pulling that up as we speak, Madam Chair, so we have student discipline and mental health support and a risk management proposed internal audit plan. We do have time there if if the board would like to edit.
Yes, please, let's add that to February second. Yes, so we we definitely need to have that dialogue as a board, as we had lots of feedback uh on what this looked like. And you have an engaged board that wants to ensure that we're providing what is needed for our schools and for our students.
Ms. Marant, um thank you for what you brought forward. Um and and I I said it earlier today, we were talking about something. Um please, um let your folk know that this is not us just saying, take this back and it's no good. I think this gives us um the proper format or structure to start having the conversations about these things. Um it's not, it's just, as you have more eyes, you know, as you have more eyes look at it, more eyes are going to see different things and have different questions. So please, uh let your, let your team know that we appreciate what they're doing and um where we are, where we are already with this. So I think we're we're gonna be, I know we'll be okay, I know we'll be okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Marant, we appreciate all the work that you've done and will continue to do.
Thank you.
One hundred percent.
Yes, thank you, with that, board, I'll move to board comments and concerns. I, Ms. Thoreau, I'm actually gonna start with you because I know you have a very time-sensitive um thing today.
Thank you, I appreciate it, um you know, as as always, I really appreciate my fellow board members, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Martinez-Lopez. Everyone that presented to us today, A- Attorney Powers. You know, we we all play a very passionate and important role in helping students succeed, helping our district succeed. And then by extension, our community succeed, you know, we are the largest employer in Marion County, so. So so goes us, so goes our community in in so many ways, and we need support and partnership all around. Thank you very much for the time and attention to the instructional calendar. You know, we did what we had to do to get through the COVID years and I feel like this is now when the real work is beginning. Where we can really hone in on and focus on on everything that's going to help make this a better district. I still have very deep reservations about the daily or the weekly one hour. However, the things that I really want to see happen, and Dr. Gullett knows exactly what those are, I've been very frank about it. You know, embedded planning for teachers within the school day, where that's not taking away from student instruction. Professional learning days separate from student days, so students aren't losing any instruction at all. And our staff that is tasked with so much, as we've been discussing, has the ability to to really focus fully um on that. In my advocacy, I have learned that the things that I am so passionate about require negotiation. You know, with with our unions, you know, our paras have been instructional paras that have been at, that have been functioning as teachers for all these years. You know, they deserve our our time, support and attention, they they need to be with their teachers. It's all of the, for all the good reasons. But we can't get there with this calendar because it hasn't been negotiated yet, but I'm signaling now that um that's the direction. That I am very passionate about going. And and I, it is my hope and prayer that the one hour uh every Wednesday and that we're gonna make it very consistent. To make it easier, you know, for everybody, we have to solve the the MAP problem because we have now shortened two weeks. And and putting parents in double jeopardy, having to pay for childcare twice is, I just don't think that that's acceptable. I I don't know what the solutions are, but there's, I'm surrounded by really smart people and and we can figure that out. And and so I just hope the community is really hearing that as we move through all of these difficult topics. That we are going to get a lot of what we want and what we need. And then we're going to get more of what we want and what we need, um because that's what we're committed to doing. And thank you, everyone, for all their time, support and attention, and that concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, I I'm gonna make one quick comment before I, Ms. Thoreau may step out before other comments. I had asked the board to bring back days that we could travel to Tallahassee to this work session. I'm gonna ask that we actually coordinate calendars on Tuesday night after our board meeting, if that's okay, because I know Ms. Thoreau does need to to scoot out, so. Oh, and you're not gonna be there, geez, okay, um I I, if you want to take two minutes to to look at calendars really quick. To see if there are specific days that work well for us to travel to Tallahassee. Fridays are not good days because often legislators are heading out of town on Fridays. Potentially Wednes- Wednesdays might be good days, I I'm not really sure.
And this is for advocacy.
This is for advocacy, for us to go on a day that is separate from the Marion County day and is separate from the F S B A legislative days.
And the intention, just to be clear, is to drive up and drive home in the same day?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
Most likely, yes.
There is something that said that we may have to go overnight and be there first thing in the morning.
This is separate, this is just us.
That's if we went to F S.
No, 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 I saw something else, I was saying that we may need to go.
You saw it in writing?
I don't know where, but I know I saw it, I mean, I I'm I'm fine either way.
No, no, that's fine, maybe that was Marion County day.
Marion County.
Okay, maybe that was from Marion County.
That, and we can talk about coordinating that at another time, uh but for a day specifically for us as a board. To travel to Tallahassee.
Yep, and then we can make our own arrangements if any of us want to stay overnight.
Correct, absolutely.
Not that far to drive up and drive back.
Correct.
Right, so what we would request then is for the team to schedule meetings with all of our legislators and um and that sort of thing.
Are you talking about going in March, correct?
Uh I believe in March.
Or February?
Uh not February, session doesn't start until March.
So it's March.
What about committees, is it, um from your perspective, is being able to talk with the people that are on those committees impactful? Because they can talk about bills then and things aren't written in stone, it could influence their thinking as as it moves forward, they become more and more. What did I say, shark tankish?
We need to go in March or April.
I I have an advocacy meeting tomorrow, so I mean, we, I I think it's tomorrow, it's either tomorrow or Monday. So I I can talk a little bit, it's tomorrow, I can talk a little bit more about what their recommendation is about going up and when to go up separately. If if that would, if you would prefer me to do that and ask that question tomorrow, then we can coordinate calendars um on Tuesday night. And we'll just have Reverend Cummings, maybe you can send to Ms. Martinez-Lopez days you are absolutely not available. If that, if that works, um so that way we can potentially coordinate. All right, let me talk about that in advocacy tomorrow, okay, with that, let's go with other board comments, thank you. Um Ms. Martinez-Lopez, did you have anything for us?
No, Madam Chair.
Tony Powers?
Nothing from legal, thank you.
Dr. Gullett.
No, thank you for your feedback today.
Dr. James.
Um I I, again, I think I want to thank everyone for the effort given today and the collaborative conversation. Um I do believe that we need to have a prorated um opportunity for families. My understanding is MAP is a cost that's created for the entire year, all one hundred and eighty days that a student goes. And then it's divided by the number of weeks that they go, and that is why that full cost is there on those weeks that are shorter. Um I think it's time to think outside the box, uh I own a preschool that happens to do weekly tuition. Uh and um while we don't prorate because we are a private center. Uh I think that there is opportunity to create proration and uh we need to explore that as an opportunity for our parents. Because there are families who um do both, they pay for private daycare those weeks as well as paying for Marion County after-school program. I also want to touch on uh an email we all received, I think, regarding um the E S E child at Marion Oaks. That is going to be removed from Marion After School Program um on the twentieth, I believe. Uh because we have been unable to support them. And I want to please ask um Dr. Gullett and our team. And I want to please ask Dr. Gullett and our team, it's the mother, who's a teacher, who spoke in our board meeting, yes, most recently. She is just a representation of a group of individuals that we are underservicing. And I believe that we need to figure out how to, how to close that gap. It's important for me, for any parent, but she's also an employee. And so, I really want us to try to figure that out. And so, I'm hopeful, Dr. Gullett, you can work with your staff to try and come up with a solution for her and her child. And I'm looking forward to seeing these staffing ratios reviewed again and presented to us again. I think we had some positive conversation. And I'm always going to be a fierce advocate for our schools and what they need. And I know that this change is uncomfortable, the calendar change is uncomfortable, but I think that we have the opportunity to do really great stuff. So, it's just about getting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
I was going to say something about the ESC parent that sent that email and came and spoke, but not only to that one. We have others. Recently, I think we probably, I don't know if you all got it, but I did get one about a ESC kid that's at Hillcrest where they, they're recommending that the kid graduate now versus continuing on and being, what do you call it, adult? I don't know, see where they're beyond graduation, but they can, they can stay till they're 22 or something like that.
Right, right.
So, this is just showing that we have some work to do in the area of ESC and a lot of work to do because we don't want to underserve anybody, especially those kids that really need the help, those families that need assistance. And just so happened, this was also a staff member for our, of our district. So, we have to, I think I saw Ms. Burgess' email that it was, this has been a 50-year issue, 50 years that we haven't tackled it. So, we have to get beyond just having the conversation. We have to actually start putting some work into it. So, very good meeting, very, very needful discussions on the calendar, very vigorous discussion on the calendar, as well as this, these unit allocations, the ratios. So, I think we're going to be, we're going to come back with some great stuff. And let me say this, and this is just my closing. Folk are not going to, everybody's not going to be happy with the calendar. There's no way we'll have 100% agreement. But we never have 100% agreement on any decision that we make, never. So, there's going to be some that's for, some that's against, some that's don't care. But our challenge as a board is to always do what's best for students and to facilitate education and to, that's going to affect the masses the most. So, I think our conversation here today spoke to that. I think our decisions are going to speak to that as well. So, we heard, I really believe we heard all of our, the comments that were coming in, good, bad, negative, indifferent, whatever. And please, and many of you email me, I try to respond to every email and let you know that I did take in consideration your input and your concerns. So, with that being said, we look forward to Tuesdays being and what decision comes out of that.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad?
I, too, just want to thank the teams of people that were here to support and provide information for us today. It was a big agenda with school choice and the calendar and Ms. DeBick and her team helping us sending out the narrative that we know is happening in our Marion County schools, so to promote all the positive things that are going on. Our family engagement piece is exciting to me and I'm looking forward to learning more about that process and hearing back from our next set of administrators that get to go on that journey. And also, Mrs. Morant, she was kind enough to meet with, I believe, each of us individually and go through this one-on-one with us. And then, came and we had a lot of, I feel like, productive discussion and what are meeting the needs of our schools. And so, I just want to say thank you to her team also. I'm very grateful for this board because even though there was a, I don't know for you all, but there was a lot of negative communication this week. So, as a community, if you send out a negative email, you might consider sending out a positive note, thanking your board members and your superintendent for the work that they are doing to not only meet the needs of the students, but to meet the needs of your families. Because one thing I feel confident about this board is every single person up here cares about improving and meeting the needs of our students. So, I would just close with that.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Echoing some of what you've just said, I continue to be grateful that the community has blessed us with the opportunity to do this work and that the five of us are blessed to be in the roles that we're in. And I am blessed to know that we are working together in a unified fashion, working towards what's best for this district. I appreciate the comments of fellow board members, and I'll speak specifically to one thing and then we'll be out of here. While I completely concur with the expanded needs of our students with unique challenges and special needs, and the way we need to approach that is different than we ever have before, I'm going to stress, anyone out there interested in helping service the needs of the student population we're talking about, please apply for these jobs. There is such a significant lack of people going into special education that we do not have enough people to actually fulfill the needs of students. And while I completely agree, we potentially should expand Marion After School Programs to include specialized exceptional student education after-school programs, I don't know how we're staffing them. And I'm just, I'm going to leave that out there. It's a vital need. While you're going to hear that there are needs in teachers in those STEM fields, the science, technology, engineering, math, you're going to hear those, absolutely. But ESC population, we need people who are interested and want to care for children with those specific, unique challenges to go into the field of education and come into our classrooms and come into our schools because we need you. And with that, I will close this meeting at 2:16 PM. Thank you.